Call the regular meeting with the county commissioner order. First item of business will be a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Lassiter.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lassiter. Just want to remind the audience to please silence your cell phones. And speaker request forms are available in the back of the room if you want to speak on any items. And also copies of the agenda are in the back of the room also. Review and approve of agenda. Settle. Good motion and a second. On favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. Ali Hinnies.
Good morning, commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda with the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 10th, 2022. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 21st, 2022. Number seven is to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale malt beverages and South Dakota farm wine licenses for the Bearded Buffalo Trading Company and Blackwell's Helicopters and to release the license upon payment of the appropriate property taxes. Number eight is approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Civil Air Patrol and Pennington County for the co-location of communication equipment. And number nine is to declare one 1996 International 2574 truck. Serial number is presented, asset number 02857 as surplus for the purpose of disposal. And that's submitted by the Highway Department. And commissioners, at this time, I'd like to ask that you remove number six from the agenda, please.
Item number six. And any members of the public wishing to have any items removed from the consent calendar? I think Mr. Ellsworth is asking for number five. Any others? Back to the commissioners, any other items the commission wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? All right, now I take a motion to approve seven, eight, and nine.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second on seven, eight, and nine. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, Mr. Ellsworth. Item five are the minutes from the regular meeting of June 10th, 2022.
Chad Ellsworth. I've requested to speak on item five this morning. Consent of this item as to item five of the June 10th agenda and minutes regarding the recognition of new employee attorney Michael Butler of Sioux Falls. Results, I believe, results in a violation of these executive session laws. SDC CL 125, 2-3 and 1, and compromise the election integrity of the June 7th election. This is a fundamental disqualification error, I believe, and certainly was not a routine and certainly not non-controversial. To clarify, on the current agenda, number five, minutes of the regular meeting, June 10th. Going to June 10th agenda, number five was the recognition of new employees. That was following, the June 10th thing was the first meeting following the May 17th, 2022 regular meeting, which I spoke against at that time. The packet that was prepared for the June 10th meeting included a letter from Ms. Sailor, treasurer, saying that there'd be a scheduled executive session on June 10th with Mark Vargo attending. And it was, ended up being an alteration because on the schedule, the executive session was set for quite a bit later. On the minutes of that, the draft minutes, by the way, of the 6:10, June 10th meeting, there was a withdrawal noted in recognition of new employees. And it actually, a session was held pursuant to that previous letter, I guess, out of order. Everything up to this point would have been routine. But the out-of-order executive session took place and it resulted in, on the last page of that thing, after they had taken off the recognition of new employees, they included on the last page, 18, a payment program set up for Public Defender for Michael Butler, $3,808. I believe that there was an intention here to hide the fact, two days before, Ms. Sailor's letter was before the election. And so therefore, all you trustees were, or commissioners, were notified of this change and consented. So the executive session did appear, does appear to involve bringing in a very compromised individual. And certainly, it goes to the main reason I'm here today is it's not a routine matter. It concerned the impeachment proceedings, Mr. Vargo, and the hiding of a new employee, apparently. And according to your own records here, what you've done is tried to get away with it before the election without certain people being, who are involved in the election, knowing that this was happening. I don't say any further.
Well, Mr. Ellsworth, I'm not sure that I'm understanding everything that you're saying, but this was not an employee of Mr. Vargo's. This was an employee of the Public Defender's Office, I believe.
Yes. Not elected.
And I don't think it was out of order. I'm not sure what you're saying by being out of order. But I think it was, in my opinion, everything was done in proper order.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hackett.
Ms. Holly. I guess I can address a couple of those items. The new employee meet and greet was pulled from the agenda because we didn't get it scheduled properly. That's all that was. Treasurer Sailor requested a special executive session item upfront of the meeting due to timing with Mr. Vargo's court schedule. He was involved in that, but it had nothing to do with whoever Mike Butler is. And there is a disclaimer on the top of the agenda that the board can take items out of order if necessary. So the executive session being moved up front is a practice that we have done in the past.
And Mike Butler is with Public Defender, and we do employees and new positions in executive session to discuss further on their, he is a new employee, if I'm correct.
Yes.
So it's nothing we haven't done before and shouldn't be done in front of the public until there's nothing to hide. It's just we're making sure that that is where we're moving that person to. So the public always knows what we've done and how we've done it. And again, we have nothing to hide here. We're always above board, so the new employees, Holly's right, that wasn't noticed, right? So we just re-did it the next commission meeting, so yeah. Some of this sounds like conspiracy, kind of crazy. I'm gonna be up straight. We don't mind answering questions, but we appreciate if you email us so we can get you those answers instead of saying it up front and then not knowing the facts on something and then us have to kind of tell you about this meeting that you're wrong. So we appreciate, Mr. Ellsworth, if you come up and ask questions, no problem there. But try to email us ahead of time, or Ms. Holly, so we can get you those facts. That way, you don't find that you're saying these things and unfortunately, there's not any truth to them. So appreciate you coming up, but again, please email us ahead of time. We'll get you those facts, and if you still have questions, we can answer those for you. We don't mind doing that at any time, sir.
Is there any further discussion on item five by the commission?
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve item five. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six, okay, Brittany.
Brittany Moller, Planning Director. Just to remove the minutes from the June 21st, 2022 meeting, this has to do with item 170. It was the PUD overlay 22-06 versus Maranova and Woffich. There were several conditions that were requested to be changed, and there was motions to that. The council, and after reviewing the meeting minutes, was understanding that under condition number five, that when they did rent the bed and breakfast, that it would be to one single family of six, in separate. So they would like that condition amended, number five, to read that the number of guesting in the bed and breakfast is not to exceed six guests and then add from a single family. Because that was their understanding during the discussion, that's how that condition would change.
So moved. We've got a motion to approve the change on the minutes to add that, those few words, which is clarifying that it's the six people are all from a family. By Commissioner Lassiter, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Regular agenda items, item number 10, Cindy Moller.
Good morning, commissioners. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. Got to get to the right liquor license here. Rushmore German Club is wanting to hold an event, and so we're asking for approval of a special retail on-sale malt beverage and wine license for July 16th from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for their classic car auction.
Mr. Chair.
Is there any public comment in regard to this? Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move approval of the special retail on-sale malt beverage retailer's license for Rushmore German Club for 14920 East Highway 44, Rapid City, for an event July 16th, 2022, from 9:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Take it. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any further comment by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
That is a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license for the Sherden, Marina Sherden Lake. So we would ask for approval on that.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
We have the transfer of the retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales from Moonshine Gulch under Betty Hearn to St. Patrick under St. Patrick LLC. We'd ask approval of that transfer.
Any public comment? Is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carried. Item D. Sheriff Tone.
Good morning, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. And Nikki's gonna pull up the PowerPoint, which I think you have this copy in front of you. And then I gave you one addendum this morning, so that one.
See if it works.
I appreciate you letting us do this during the regular commission meeting. We were out of state at National Sheriff's Association meeting when budget meetings were held. Our victim services program for the sheriff's office received a national award from National Sheriff's. We wanted to be there to help receive that award, so.
Tell us a little more about the awards.
Yeah, we have a victim services program that serves both the police department and the sheriff's office. Our victim specialists respond along with the investigators and detectives at the time of the crime to work directly with the victims and their families. And an individual that I know from out of state actually nominated us, wrote up a nice nomination for the award. And there's a vetting process through the National Sheriff's Association where they pick, you know, one nominee a year, and they're nominated or selected and receive the award at the annual conference.
It's over.
Yeah.
That was national?
Congratulations.
National recognition?
Yeah, National Sheriff's Association, yeah, so.
So I saw that was held in Kansas City this year?
That's correct.
Does that move around the country?
Yep, every year. They, well, four or five years in advance, they pick host cities. Yep, Kansas City.
Okay.
I didn't have any Kansas City barbecue while I was there, so I regret that.
Okay.
Yeah. So I will run through our PowerPoint fairly quick, so if you have a question, you know, please let me know. But if you're okay, Mr. Chair, I'll go and just run through it. And then I just want to spend a few minutes on the budget stuff at the end, really kind of summarizing it. And I know it's provisional, so you have this and you can look through the data. And just overview, overview of crime data, you know, on my left is Pennington County Sheriff's Office. The FBI and the South Dakota Attorney General report crime by agency, so that's why we've reported that way. We take the extra step on the overall crime data in Pennington County and total box elders, Rapid City, and Pennington County, just so you can see the overall impact. And that's something we do separate of what FBI and Attorney General does, just to show the activity within Pennington County. Coroner calls, again, as you're well aware, the sheriff is also a coroner of Pennington County. That happened in 1998. It's a good model. It was a busy year, over 500 coroner calls for the last couple of years, so it's been busy. Drug investigations, and again, I'm gonna run through these fairly quick. But, you know, we have our Unified Narcotics Enforcement Task Force, which is city, county, state, working alongside our federal and on occasion tribal partners, chasing drug traffickers in western South Dakota, which oftentimes leads to major conspiracy cases that are prosecuted, both in federal and state court, leading all the way back to Mexico on occasion. And methamphetamine continues to be the most persistent controlled substance that we deal with. And you can see from 2012 to 2021, the increase in methamphetamine arrests represents overall arrests.
I have one question on that.
Yeah, Commissioner LaCroy.
Kevin, what is the others? Eight percent is others for arrests under the drug. I mean, you got them all labeled out fairly good, but that others, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it could be just, it could be LSD. It could be just a smattering of other drugs that just, we broke the major ones down. I don't have a breakdown of the 7%, but I can send that to you.
Okay, I was just curious, it's just a multitude of other ones, but just not enough for delaywood into one category, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Care campus, of course, remains busy. Partnership with Barry and his crew at Health and Human Services. And then Lutheran Social Services up in the addiction treatment side. And the numbers, which we've talked about many times, so I won't spend a lot of time on those. And then referral source, one thing that we have been pleased with over the last few years is the amount of people that'll self-report. In other words, law enforcement's not able to bring them there, they'll self-report to the center. And then we can get them off the street and deal with them and hopefully try and link them with some of our services. Crisis stabilization unit, as you're well aware, that's being built as we speak. It's still ahead of schedule, Mike?
Yes, significantly ahead of schedule still, even with some reason.
Yeah, so we're ahead of schedule, working with behavior management systems, pursuing a couple of different grants to help with funding, working with our community partners. And as we talked before, this was a pilot that's now become a model for the state. You know, the legislature approved additional funding for these and towards the other areas of the state moving forward. So we created the model for the state as opposed to sending people to the Human Services Center in Yankton. The jail, the jail is full, overfull this morning after a three-day weekend. Been working with building committee. I have a consultant that's been presenting data to the building committee about our projections, looking at our jail population and our current jail population. And, you know, over the next few months here, the building committee will bring some of this data forward to talk about, you know, overall building needs for Pennington County. But in particular, we'll be focusing on the jail. There's infrastructure needs currently in the facility. But, you know, long-term, looking at their numbers, we're probably gonna need another four or 500 beds over the next, you know, 15, 20 years, so literally almost doubling the current capacity we have. So there's some real needs there in terms of corrections, and there'll be more to come on that. But again, a couple of commissioners sat on the building committee and recently sat through that presentation. And, you know, we have a lot of different alternatives through diversion with the state's attorney's office and other programs. And that's staved off some of the growth, but we're reaching the point where we're saying we have to do something.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Raskin. So Kevin, I think we have roughly 624 beds.
Correct, that's if there's a person in every single bed. But when you look at functional operational capacity, that number is significantly less because you have to allow for classification, male, female, high-risk, low-risk, medium-risk, and different classification. And the other thing is, you shouldn't count your beds and booking as part of your overall capacity. And we do when we talk about that number. So the operational or functional capacity of the jail is significantly less than that.
Well, the needs assessment in 10, 15 years, if I recall, is gonna be just about double that.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of expense.
Yeah, it's a real number.
To taxpayers.
Yeah. So more to come on that via the building committee. Jail staff continue to do an excellent job, even though we still struggle filling our correctional officer positions. The commission's been good to work with us on the double overtime, on hiring bonuses, things like that, to help incentivize and retain our current staff. But it's challenging, especially if it comes through a three-day weekend and when the courts are closed and we get kind of bottlenecked. I was like mentioning this, you know, we have a lot of people in the jail, but we put them to work. And if you go on the top, we have a community work program, so in lieu of sentencing people, we have them go out and do things around the campus or pick them garbage. You'll see those little yellow vests that say Sheriff Work Program. They're out in lieu of sitting in the jail, they're out doing work around the campus, cleaning up the area. And then inside the facility, the kitchen and laundry program. If we had to do all the work ourselves, the laundry and the kitchen work, it'd be the equivalent of almost, you know, 58 FTEs, full-time employees, that's trustees, that's inmates in the jail, doing the work along with our vendor and our jail staff, you know, providing, you know, food and laundry services to the jail. So we try and get a lot of work out of them while they're in the facility. JSE, again, running full there. If you look at long-term, again, at the building committee discussions, we have room for growth at the Juvenile Services Center. You know, it's a southern county compact, just to remind you of kind of counties along the western seaboard here. And it's a good partnership, it's one that's been talked about. There's two legislative summer studies going on, looking at correctional issues in South Dakota and jail issues, state corrections and jail issues. And we forwarded a lot of information on the compact, which is now a joint powers agreement with the Juvenile Services Center as a potential model for other regions of the state to use. Again, just more of the numbers on the community monitoring, home detention. And again, we partner with Lutheran Social Services on our Arise Center. We have as many public-private partnerships as we can.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I just had a question on that, Kevin. On these numbers, it's 2019, 2020, do we have 2021 numbers?
I don't want you to have those. I'll send those over, I must have updated those, but I'll get those sent over to you.
Okay.
Volunteers, again, 100, 150 volunteers, a wide variety of capacities, serving the sheriff's office from our cadets, our senior volunteers, to our chaplains, to people that come into our various facilities for AA and Narcotics Anonymous and faith-based programs. We have just a wide variety of people that come and do programming in our facilities. And a couple of dogs that volunteer too. There's Harley, our therapy dog, another volunteer. But our wellness program, again, I think we've created a model for the state and the region, taking care of our staff. I've said it before, I'll say it again, you stay in this business long enough, you'll eventually see everything one human being can do to another human being. So it's important that, as our people witness that every day and deal with kind of tragedy and chaos in our community at times, that we take care of them so they can take care of others. And through the commission's support, we've invested back in our employees to do that. So budget numbers, just kind of get to the meat of it here. The, there is one error on here too. It says 432 FTE. It should be 431. What we didn't account for was the transfer to the auditor's office when we moved Liz over as part of the centralized grant program. So it should be 431. So our total increase will be four FTE this year and not the three as reflected here because we transferred one over. So the four FTEs we're requesting, three of them will be through a COX grant if we receive that grant. And that's a matching grant from the federal government that offsets the cost for first three years to fund new positions to bring them on. And the other one's a nurse, just helping meet our medical needs so we can get closer to, you know, 24-hour coverage in our facilities, although we're not there. But so a nurse and three deputies if we receive that grant. I'd like to show this, our tax support request. Over the years, the last few years, you can see we've been very frugal in our requests in terms of tax support. We're unique in that we have the ability to have so many offsetting revenues to support our budget to the tune of about 48%. And that fluctuates every year by a percent or two, but 48% of our budget is supported by revenues other than Pennington County tax support. You know, this year, you see a significant request, and that's a reflection of one increase in cost, but just the salary policy that the commission approved, which I supported. And so let's see, the impact for this year. And just our overspent, underspent or reflected revenues. Again, we have a good business model with the sheriff's office, we've been able to generate a lot of additional revenue above and beyond our budgets, and it helps go back into the county coffers. I would say, you still get to spend, you just gotta wait a year to spend it. It comes back to the county and Cindy builds it into the next year's budget. And, you know, one thing where we're gonna start feeling the pinch is on the jail side because we have to kick out some of our paying customers to make room for other customers. And we're trying to find that sweet spot. But if we have to decrease our paying customers, that's additional fiscal impact on the county for, I mean, the ones who are statutory obligated to house and the jails. So again, working with building committee, and we'll hopefully come with some suggestions over the next few months to the county commission. I want to jump over to this sheet for just a second. I handed you this one this morning. And I know I don't have a slide for this, I apologize to those in the audience. And I know I don't have a slide for this, I apologize to those in the audience. But if you just start from the left and go right on the green there, you know, we show up, I'm just going to round these out, but $2.4 million total increase. You know, one commitment we made when we came in and asked for an increase in salaries for deputies was we would try and find as much offsetting revenues as we could. So we've increased our revenues by 801,000. That's a combination of, you know, largely the correctional increases, we're going to increase the marshal's rate, some grants, other things. So it takes us down to a tax support of that 1.6. Of that 1.6, 1.3 of that was per the budget preparation guidelines the commission gave us in terms of salary policy, health insurance increase, those sorts of things. So that leaves 299,000 at, you know, operational expenses, et cetera. And I did a little gray box off to the side. So in there, you know, Monument Health gave us funding for medical care at the care campus, and that money's already been received in the county, but we'll take 74,000 of that and use it to pay for the nurse, you know, next year. So that's where that'll come from. Then the 123,000, that's an agreement that has buildings and grounds, and Mike can speak to it as well. Instead of them buying supplies, we'll buy the supplies for the jail. So it's just, that's just a transfer of 123 out of their budget to 123 in our budget. So it should be a corresponding decrease in their budget. And then just a footnote on the ARPA funds, there's 109,000, we're absorbing two of the MacArthur positions. There's two ways you can do it. One is you can do it through tax support, or you could take some of the ARPA dollars, spend 109,000 of the ARPA dollars, which would be less than the accumulated building, but that would free up 109,000 of tax support you could use to meet other county needs. So I just sort of, there's a footnote, I know it's provisional, Cindy and I talked about this morning, but you all can sort out all the nuances to the budget as we go forward, but just wanted to highlight some of those. You got the, again, the revenues, we talked about the revenues. Again, when you have a chance to digest these and you want to talk about between now and provisional budget or the final budget, we'll have time to, you know, run through these and digest and further answer any questions you may have. Again, some things looking forward, jail towers remodel, law enforcement FTEs, you know, just based on our previous staffing study through National Sheriff's Association and the growth in the county. We think over the next couple of three years, we're going to need at least 10 more bodies on patrol and into investigations, and we're trying to carve some of that out through grants this year with three of them that we're asking for. But just putting it on your radar, just know that there's a bill coming down the road, I guess, and then working on the 24/7 medical coverage in our facilities, just meeting the high needs of the population we serve. There, I kind of ran through it fast, there's a lot to digest, but certainly stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Raskin.
So Kevin, when you talk about the capacity of the jail, would, is part of that because when you get to the court system and some of these prisoners are being incarcerated in the jail, and if we could get them through the court system quicker, would that take some of the relief off the occupancy?
One thing we identified through our MacArthur initiatives and then the consultants, again, identified it independently when we met with them, is what we call case processing, how fast people move through the system. And the federal system is particularly slow. I think they set a number, three or four months on average, they were waiting, on average, people going through the federal side. And on the state side, as people, I call them languishing the system, waiting to be their case to be disposed of, it adds to their average length of stay. So the average length of stay drives up the population in the jail. It's like your occupancy rate is higher, so it drives up the population in the jail. So if we could work with our partners, the state's attorney, public defender, the courts, to try and get more efficient in case processing, it would definitely have a positive impact on the jail.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoque.
I just wanted to make comment, Kevin, that, you know, we just had this facilities need study presented to us last week, and Ron and I are going to give a report to the commission at the end of this meeting on that, and they'll probably get a copy so they kind of understand what's going on. But there's a lot of moving parts, and it seems like, you know, if you straight up the jail facilities, we're going to have to do some immediate needs on that. You know, I mean, your budget is going to go down by the time you start taking those beds away from the payers, the ones that are helping support you right now in order to meet the needs of the community right now. So I think that's something we'll, the commission will discuss and kind of, I think we also talked about, once the building committee narrows things down and works through all the needs with all the stakeholders and so forth, then we'll bring something forward to the commission to look at.
And there's one thing looming out there. At this last legislative session, there was an effort to take some one-time money and put into a pot for counties, like 100, 150 million, to put into a fund for counties to be able to tap into for one-time jail needs. Well, that got punted to these summer studies on corrections, so I don't know. If those summer studies bear out, maybe there'll be a chance to get some one-time funding through that legislative process, but there's a lot of steps between now and then if that happens, but maybe one alternative to create some additional funding for some of our needs. Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Thank you, Kevin.
I think I'm next on the agenda too, so I'll just stay here if that's okay. I can go sit down and come back up if you want. The, this is a request to add a charge nurse position to our medical wage scale. We missed it last year, earlier this year, we created the law enforcement scale, the medical scale. We just missed one of our positions on the medical side and just asked that it be added to the scale per the motion that's on there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoque.
I'd move to approve the addition to the charge nurse position on the medical wage scale as approved by the board at the January 4th meeting to be effective July 24th of 2022.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any public comment relative to this? Seeing none back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, are we hearing Shannon at this point in time? Shannon?
Good morning, Shannon Ripper, Director of Equalization. So I don't got a PowerPoint, I sent you a memo. Here if you have any questions. My budget is really pretty simple. The overall budget increased about seven and a half percent, and most of that is ordinary salaries expense. A lot of it is an increase in the county's healthcare costs and changes in my staff. We tend to be hiring more younger people with families that go on a full healthcare plan than somebody that's just a single. And we're down four, soon to be five appraisers in our office, which is a third of the appraisal staff that we have. And when I budget for new employees, I budget for a family plan on health insurance.
Questions to Shannon? You must have had a class last week on efficiency to get this down to this short.
So just experience. And I should say thanks, this, same as the sheriff did, I was at a conference last week. In fact, I hosted the conference for regional states as part of our continuing education and for our certification in South Dakota. So I wasn't able to be here because of that.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Shannon.
Thanks.
Item number 12, crisis stabilization. Did I miss something, Cindy? Okay.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Pennington County Buildings and Grounds. At your July 10th, I apologize, I forgot to type along my memo to you, you had authorized us to move forward with some purchasing of furniture, fixtures and equipment for the crisis stabilization project. We began working on acquiring that stuff when we ran into an issue relative to two of the contracts. We were informed that Pennington County did not qualify for under the GSA contract agreements. So we've gone back to the state agreement and purchase agreements through the state and are seeking authorization for that. And I'm bringing it back to you because there is an increase in cost overall. The two contracts that are affected is a Kimball contract, which is now $25,062.18 and a national contract for $90,294.16. Overall, our amount purchasing, we're purchasing with this sales agreement with Dakota Business is for $161,683.55 now. I am asking just for authorization for $165,000 at this point. I'm just trying to avoid having to come back to you again if there's, because of timing issues, things change, the prices change on things so fast right now, that I'm trying to avoid running into a challenge with that. So I've just asked it for that rounded up number at this point.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
So at this time, did you have to use any of your contingency yet for any of these items that you're moving forward with?
We have not had to use contingency yet.
So you're on budget pretty much?
We are on budget, and to clarify, I do consider contingency money as part of the budget, but we have not used contingency money to purchase furniture.
Thank you, Mike. Good job.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoque.
I'd moved authorize Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds, to execute purchase orders, agreements as necessary to procure furniture for the crisis stabilization facility per Dakota Business Center revision in the amount of $165,000 utilizing crisis stabilization general FFNE budget funds.
Got a motion in a second. Any public comment? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. I do need to revert back, Jerome, I'm going to hold you up a second. I do need to revert back after, after we heard the sheriff and equalization, we should have gone back to item 10D.
Do we need another motion on this?
Cindy is being too kind of saying I didn't skip over something when I did.
Do we have another motion on this one, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
On which one?
This one's got two, is it two motions, Holly? Is it the 165 and 143? Or is that? Am I wrong?
I just have the 165.
It's on the third page? Is there another motion we need to make, Holly? On the third page here?
I apologize, one moment here.
I don't see anything on mine, but.
I think it was just, everything was one motion.
Is the total with the 165 and the 143 is two?
That was the old, that 143 is the old.
Oh.
It's just the one motion for the 165,000.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mike, I thought you had two motions. You were just switching from the 143 to 165.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Cindy? So we're back, we're back to the provisional budget now. We've actually heard all of the departments now.
Maybe you didn't want to discuss the rest of it until 19. Okay, maybe they changed their mind.
I just put that away.
Well, I did go back and add in the FTEs and made a few changes on revenues on the budget and the means of finance. As you can see now, we're looking at about 18 and a half percent for the general fund on assigned reserves after making those changes. You know, Holly made a little bit of a change in the commissioner's budget. Then we did the FTEs and the state's attorney, FTEs in law enforcement and the city-county alcohol and drug program, and then also in planning. So that's where the major differences were on the general fund. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Okay. There's a couple, I don't have a problem with adopting the provisional budget. We have opportunity to go in and make some adjustments on that as we move forward. But there are some things that I would like to see provided to us in the meantime. One is on the insurance breakdown, and I'm looking at John on this, just giving us a breakdown of each of our insurance coverages, what the current is and what is being projected for next year for all various coverages. I think I'd like to see a little bit more on the JSC, just a breakdown on some of those costs that go along with that, some increases there. State's attorney's office, I think we need to review where we're at with the state's attorney's office also. Those are the ones I have marked down. Are the others that the commission wants further information or clarification on?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoque.
I did have questions on the deputies, but I think Kevin explained that those three covered underneath the grant, correct, starting out? The three that you got? Okay. But I would agree with the, Mr. Chairman, on additional information on some of those, but I think for provisional and seeing how hirings go on, as I said in the previous meeting, I'm okay with at this time approving, moving forward with the employees.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
I'm okay with us moving forward on approving the provisional as well, and then looking at having the people that needed FTEs this year come and do a presentation for us, and then maybe voting on them separately or something like that, that we're actually approving them and we agree with all the FTEs that we're having, so we can do them individually instead of just, you know, put them all together.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Huster.
Just, and this is just a question. I know we received all the presentations at our last meeting, but there were some that didn't give presentations. I mean, I know today we had sheriff's department in equalization, but some of those others, are those included in this budget or are they not included in this budget as provisional?
What others?
I don't remember seeing a tab that had others, or is it all just got our?
That's community health and all those.
I think they were all included.
Yeah.
They are all included, yes. Everything that I received is all included.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoque.
So what this presented as it is, with the 18, from what I'm hearing from the commission is they're looking at some more information on the FTEs, but we'd be at the 18.49% in our reserves, correct? And last year when we did, we said it around 19 and ended up being 21.
Correct.
Something, so, but I'm in agreement with you guys moving forward and we could do separate, but give city the direction to get it moving forward.
So do we have to make a motion today?
Don't have to.
No, provisional cannot be approved until after the 15th, so it'll be at the 19th.
At the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other information that any of the commission wants from any department?
Or any other numbers from me?
Or other numbers from Cindy?
Did good on the numbers.
Yeah, we want lower, we want lower numbers, Cindy.
I would like lower numbers too, but it's not coming in that way.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jerome, item number 13, Quinn Volunteer Fire Department.
Good morning, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Jerome Harvey, Fire Administrator, Pennington County, South Dakota. With me today is Chief Humphrey, the Quinn Volunteer Fire Department. And as requested last week, the agreement is before you, has been signed by the appropriate parties on the Quinn side and is ready for your review and signatures. The agreements have all been gone through by, set up by Counsel Alderman and his crew and are on track. It's the same agreement as he had with Suneck. Have Chief Humphries with me here today. If you have any questions, ask him directly.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Mr. Humphries, could you tell us your breaking ground and some other things that you're doing out there to move forward on your fire station? Just a, just another update for us, sir.
Yeah, we've got the ground broke, our contractor, we've got to do it. He's booked out so far, and especially with the storm damages around. We're just backed off, we're going to start construction next spring when he's, he'll be able to have his full attention on it and stuff.
But you secured the land and you're preparing the land and everything for it?
Moved the topsoil off the building site already, and later this summer, we're probably going to, he wants to dig the dirt down deeper, put his engineer field and get it compacted and.
Can you tell us, you needed a new fire station for that area because that's Can you tell us, you needed a new fire station for that area because that's a lot of area to cover? Tell us why you decided to do a new fire station.
Our old one, we, we've outgrown it. The last truck that backs in, hopefully it's a skinny guy that can crawl out the window and fit up.
There you go, sir.
The summertime, we stationed one truck in the Creighton area, that's twenty-five miles north of us, he just twenty-five miles closer to that area.
Nice.
It's the northern part of our area, it's right at fifty-five miles from the fire hall.
And how long you been with the service, sir?
How long have I been with the Quinn Fire Department?
Fire service, yes, sir.
Twenty-six years.
Appreciate your service, sir.
We've really grown in the last ten, fifteen years.
Lot of area to cover.
Mm-hmm. Well, we take in a lot of Hocken County and Jackson, and we've been up here helping you guys out a few times.
Yep, a lot of times those, those around that area don't have fire departments, and they need you guys, so we appreciate that.
That's gonna be a tremendous boost to the community of Quinn and staff, so.
Appreciate it, sir.
So how many square miles do you cover, chief?
We basically go from Wall North to the Shine River, and east from Grindstone Road in Hocken County, north to the river. Go to, like I said, from the north end, we're fifty-five miles.
About twenty-two hundred square miles. It's larger than several eastern states.
Yeah. Bigger. So, we had a meeting with Hocken County, we took up a lot of the area that Milesville was taken care of when they lost their certification a couple of years ago. Hocken County wanted us to take more, but we just got big areas out there to cover, so.
So they, they lost their certification because of numbers of the?
Well, they're building a new fire hall, and they're getting built back up again, like we are.
Okay.
Fifty wet years, and everybody kind of forgets about the fire departments till you get a dry year, you get a lot of fires, and everybody kind of realizes, well, we need the fire departments and.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Remove approval on the agreement.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the agreement between the county and the Quinn Volunteer Fire Department. Any public comment in regard to this? Any further discussion by the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I just wanted to thank you for traveling in and coming up, presenting today, and this question has been outstanding in supporting the, the fire department, and it's probably one of the rarest times that we were able to have some funding to build to do what, what's happening this year, so I just close to show you how much we appreciate what you guys do, because it could've went somewhere else.
It's helped our mind to be able to get something like this and to be able to do this.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we thank you all for thinking of us.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So I assume you attended the Cactus Cafe fire?
Yep.
Boy, that thing looked like it got pretty hot. If you, there's a picture showing the truck and crew from Quinn under, direction of Chief Humphries, where the fire was actually progressing down the street underneath the awnings. And to put it in parlance, that's appropriate here, there was some real old time firefighting going on there, and that really stopped that fire from progressing toward, down the street and destroying further buildings. So Quinn was, Quinn was very much involved in the entire county fire service and very important part of that. So yes, they were at the Cactus fire in that photo, I, I will send it to you again, it is a very dramatic photo, the action they were taking.
And I think that's one of the reasons that we really supported the four fire departments, just, that's a testimony how important these fire departments are, and, and especially the volunteers that make those fire departments run the way they do.
And we get great support from all the departments up this year way here, but it's fifty-five miles for them to come, and something like Wall and old buildings, that's fifty-five miles is the difference between saving the town or?
Yep. Well, thank you for your service.
Yeah, that, the Cactus fire was the one that's, could've lost the whole main street wall without the firemen being on top of that, so really appreciate that.
Yeah, we had a lot of things in our favor that night, you know.
Few years ago, that fire in Keystone, that took, that took out just about one half of one, on Winter Street, so very fortunate to limit it to just that one particular building.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for helping, I'm Jerome.
Item fourteen, John.
Morning Commissioners, John Morrow, County resources. So what we're asking today is approval to add a new position title to the job listing. Doesn't add to the office, but what it does is give us a chance to hire somebody into an entry level position. When we did the Gallagher study here a few years ago, only positions that had employees in the position were actually evaluated. We didn't have a legal secretary, one in the public defender's office. We want the ability to hire somebody into that job instead of looking for someone with additional experience. We, we're believing this will help us staff the office and gives them another option with regard to posting. So what I'm asking today is approval to add that and then to, to put it in the position listing.
So John, I know that you, you've worked with the public defender's office on all the, on their positions. Is this the last one, or do we, or you still have others that you're working on?
This is the last one that I'm aware of right now. Now, the positions are evolving as our needs in the county are changing, so you'll see that through some of the other offices. We'll restructure or add a position, remove a position. This is putting a position in place that we have in the state's attorney's office but didn't have in the public defender's office.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd moved to approve the additional legal secretary one position in the public defender's office as DBMV twenty-two at eighteen sixty-six an hour effective July fifth, twenty-twenty-two, to update the position listing number file.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, this is a lien request form. Anybody presenting this? Okay. And I believe the, the applicant is, at this point in time, still incarcerated.
Correct.
And, as I read this, I think he's, he's actually, he's asking the county to give him a lien request to the amount of a little less than three thousand dollars, is that, is that correct? His total obligations are, he indicates are somewhere around eighty-five thousand when you include medical, ambulance, and all that stuff.
Does that twenty-seven, Mr. Chairman, is that twenty-seven cover of the court fees, the restitution and the, and the individual deemed in that letter? He hasn't even come out to try to even try to pay any of it. So it's kind of where I'm leaning, that we don't re- remove it because he hasn't even tried. I mean.
I'm gonna move denial.
Second.
I've got a motion to deny.
Mr. Chair.
And a second. Commissioner Roskinak.
So if I got this right, and we've done this before, he can still pay ten, five dollars a month.
Yep.
No interest, I mean, that's the position that we've always taken, and I totally agree with the, the denial based on that he, he can make minimum payments.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for clarification, if somebody can answer, maybe Jay. So whenever, if we ever waive those fees, let's just say, you know, the court fee and the restitution, does that mean the individual doesn't pay that back? I mean, and, and then that person, like the individual listening here, I don't want to name their name, well, I guess it's public, would they not get that hundred and eleven dollars if it was allocated to them? If we waived those fees? And I just want to understand, and I don't know if you need to see this, Jay, to see what I'm talking about, that's specific. So like, for example, he's asking for the twenty-seven hundred dollars, and I believe this is the breakdown, that number, that number, and that number. But if we waived it in the future, does that mean he doesn't pay that back to that individual, or who pays that individual?
What, what you're in charge of is county, I don't see that as a county.
Oh, so that's not county?
Yeah, yeah, that's additional stuff that you wouldn't have in your state.
Oh, okay, so that's not with that, yeah, okay.
It's just economic means and those kinds of stuff. Right? And you can release, I'm sorry. Jay Altman from the state's attorney's office, you can release liens as you've done before against a certain property, but any after acquired property, it can still attach. I mean, there's a lot of different options you can do to compromise liens to assist people, but what Commissioner Roskinak was saying, generally speaking, is exactly what you've done in the past, where people can make some minimum payments and just need to arrange that.
Okay?
Got you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I think this is probably a proper time, we just heard from P D O during the budget times about going to a fee-based system. Along with this type of, it's something we need to really look at. We, doing the billing for, for a bunch of people way back, we, is a total of about three million dollars, and we've been averaging and collecting about two hundred thousand every year for, for this type of thing. Usually don't find out until they go to buy a house or something along those lines, but they do it. I know the P D O was talking about, just to do their billing time for what's going on, is taking almost a full-time benefit person to keep track of that time. I just wanted to bring that back up. I'm supportive with on, motion on the floor, but just be aware that the P D, the public defender's office and the court systems have, have come a long way as far as going through who's eligible to receive services and who isn't, and doing a lot of research, so there may be something coming forward next year with some evaluations. Is it worth us collecting two hundred thousand dollars a year or go to a fee-based where they pay so much so we don't have this come up? But it, it's something in the works, but I'm supportive of the motion on the floor.
Okay, I have a motion to deny. Is there, I don't know if I asked for public comment or not? Is there any public comment in regard to this? I see any? Back to the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item sixteen, approval of the vouchers, the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Move for approval.
Got a motion, is there a second? I'll second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Items from the public, is there any member of the public here that wishes to bring any, anything to the attention of the commission? Seeing none? I would, I would suggest that with the time where it is, that we change our agenda, move our agenda to go into executive session at this time.
So move. Second.
Got a motion to go into executive session for personnel and legal issues and annual review. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm musty in here.
Yeah, motion. To come out of executive session.
So move. Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Need a motion to go into board of adjustment?
We'll move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item A, Cody.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item A is variance VA twenty-two dash fifteen, it is to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to five feet. The applicant and landowner is John Consella, he is in the audience if there are any questions. The property is zero point seven four acres, currently zoned suburban residential district, existing land use would be residential. Access is off West Highway forty-four. There is special flood hazard area on the property, zone A E, which means there's floodway on the property. When looking at variances, we take a two-pronged approach. For prong number one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest, the answers are on the board, I'll read them aloud. Number one, no, the requested setback is five feet from the front, from the front yard. The proposed single-family residence sits five feet from the property line. Number two, no, all residential zoning designations require a twenty-five foot setback from the property line. It appears that all other structures in the neighborhood will meet the required twenty-five foot setback. Number three, no, the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five foot setback from the front property line in suburban residential district. The proposed single-family residence will be five feet from the front property line. Number four, no, the future land use of the property is suburban residential district, which requires a twenty-five foot setback from the front property line. And number five, no, the requested setback is five feet from the front property line. A setback to the, a setback of five feet should have minimal impact on the safety, health, and general welfare of the public. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists that would grant a variance, number one, yes. Rapid Creek splits the property in two, thus the majority of flat buildable area on the subject property is located within the floodway, while the other half of the property is Rocky Cliff. One A, yes. Topography creates a limited building envelope on the property. Without an approved setback variance, the only option available is to build within the floodway. And one B, yes. Granting this, granting this variance will avoid development inside the floodway while still allowing the applicant to instruct the residents on the subject property. Again, the applicant has requested to allow a five-foot setback from the front property line in order to construct a single-family residence outside the floodway. Development within the floodway increased the risks of property damage and loss of life. So with that, staff is recommending approval of variance VA twenty-two dash fifteen with one condition. Staff would also like to amend that condition, the very last sentence says will be at least five feet from the center of the section line. It should read five feet from the front property line.
Did that create any issue with the advertising?
No, that was the, the condition, it was taken over from a previous request. Staff just didn't change the section line portion to the front line, it was still advertising the front yard setback, it was just the condition that needs to change.
Any, are the property owners here?
Yes, he is.
Here to answer questions only, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any public comment in regard to this?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Move to approve variance twenty-two dash sixteen with the staff's, pursuant to staff's recommendations.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adjourn as the board of adjustment reconvene as the board of commissioners.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Change agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following two items. Item B is road naming, Diane Byron, to name a forty-five, or excuse me, a forty-foot wide access easement providing access, the name would be Dominell Road, and Planning Commission recommended approval of the road name of Dominell Road. And item C is planning unit development amendment review PU zero eight ten for J K R K Properties, Ryan Caskey, to review the Sunset Ranch planning unit development. Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension of planning unit development PU zero eight one zero with twenty-two conditions.
Any members of the public who wish to have either of these items removed from the consent agenda so that they can be discussed? A question for you, Brittany, on item C. Is this the same property that we just dealt with relative to the racetrack?
Yes, this is the P U D that the racetrack was in. This P U D needed to be reviewed to amend because they're planting thirty-nine lots off, so the P U D needed to be amended to update the legal descriptions. So none of the conditions changed, it was just to update the legal descriptions associated with the planning unit development.
And this also comes up, there's another item on the, under contested hearings, or?
Yes, for the vacation of easement because they re, redid some of the lot lines.
Any commission member want either item B or C removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the planning consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion, is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Jason Thenson, Assistant Director. Agenda item D is comprehensive plan amendment twenty-two dash fourteen to amend the comprehensive plan to change future land use from ranchet district to rural residential. Applicant is Dale Kerstedt. His agent is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is two three nine three eight highway three eighty-five. As a citizen, the property is 7.19 acres. Access is off highway three eighty-five and there is 100 year as well as floodway on the For comprehensive plan amendment request, staff reviews current zoning, future land use, and infrastructure in the area. Current land use is on the screen as you can see in yellow, rural residential. Plan unit development is in blue, agriculture, light green, open space, dark green, highway service and red, suburban residential and brown, and the city of Hill City in white. Future land use within one half mile is rural residential in yellow, plan junior development in blue, open space, dark green, highway service and red, suburban residential and brown, and again, the Hills city of Hill City in white. The applicant is proposing to split this lot into two different parcels. You can see the existing on the left-hand side of the screen and the proposed on the right. Staff looked at infrastructure. Again, their private onsite wastewater treatment systems are common in the area and is what is proposed on this subdivision. And roads and streets, private driveway is off of highway three eighty-five. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. The South Dakota Department of Transportation noted that they will not grant additional access off of US sixteen. No other objections or concerns were received. The applicant has also applied to rezone the property to rural residential, which will be the next agenda item. The request appears to be in harmony with existing land uses in the area and the county comprehensive plan due to 2040. With that, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment twenty-two dash fourteen.
Is there anyone here that wants to present on this information?
I'm sorry?
Is there anyone here wishing to present on this?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I'll go ahead and move to approve comprehensive plan amendment CA two-two dash fourteen.
Second. Motion, is there a second? Second. Any public comment? Any discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E, rezone of the same property.
This is rezone twenty-two dash twenty to rezone 7.19 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Again, the owner is Dale Kerstedt. His agent is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is two three nine three eight highway three eighty-five. Again, there is special flood hazard area and floodway on the property. Staff did evaluate the same criteria with current zoning, future land use, and infrastructure. With that, staff recommends approval of rezone twenty-two dash twenty.
Move for approval.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment for the rezone on this property? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item F is preliminary plan PPL twenty-two dash thirty-three. It is to subdivide and create lots one, two, three, four, and a utility lot of no boundary subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Rob Livingston. This was continued by the Planning Commission to the July eleventh Planning Commission meeting, so staff is recommending to continue preliminary plat PPL twenty-two dash thirty-three to the July eighteen Board of Commissioners meeting.
I'll move.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Ross Connect.
So do you know why they chose to continue this particular item?
There was concerns that our records indicate that the lot is 14 acres. Their plat and their rezones show that it's 18 acres. So the surveyor, his surveyor was doing some research and found that some of the property pins from a 1960 plat were wrong. So we're working with the surveyor and the Register of Deeds office to get that corrected.
Okay.
Totally makes sense. Sorry, July nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay, so it's not going back to the Planning Commission?
It's it's going back to the Planning Commission on the eleventh, and that's where they'll make their recommendation to the board. So we're recommending to continue it at to the July nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to move this to the continue it until the July nineteenth meeting. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G.
Item G is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash fifteen. It's to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from highway service district to rural residential district. The owner and applicant is Rob Livingston. This item was also continued to the July eleventh Planning Commission meeting, so the staff's recommending that this also be continued to the July nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Is there a motion?
I move. Continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H.
Item H is rezone RZ twenty-two dash twenty-one. It is to rezone 9.83 acres from highway service district to rural residential district. Again, the applicant is Rob Livingston. Again, the Planning Commission continued this to the July eleventh 2022 Planning Commission meeting, so staff's recommending to continue this item as well to the July nineteenth Board of Commissioners meeting.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Motion and second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I, under contested hearings.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item I is vacation of minor and drainage utility easement. Twenty-two dash zero one is to vacate 20-foot utility and major drainage easements on lots 10 and 11 and lots 14 and 16 of block nine of the Sunset Ranch subdivision. The applicant is J K R K Properties LLC. Ryan Caskey is the agent. Long Branch Engineering is the surveyor. This was required to be vacated due to the fact that the subject property was replatted. These lots were replatted into other lots. So they are vacating those interior lines here and they're redoing the lot lines. So those need to be vacated. So staff is recommending approval of vacation of easement VA twenty-two dash zero one with one condition.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So 20-foot wide, major drainage easement, where are they going to put the easements at or the drainage is the property? I guess I I can't see a picture of how the property looks, but that's a pretty wide vacate for an easement or drainage, Brittany. And why would someone put a 20-foot wide utility and major drainage easement in that area if they didn't think that there was going to be some issues?
Sure. And they did. So this is the final plat that they submitted with the, oops, excuse me. Let me find the.
Yeah, I was going to say I read it, but I didn't. I didn't look it up on like a rapid map or anything just to see what the property looked like.
Brittany, if I remember correctly, this was on the planning and zoning when I was there, and I thought it was because they're going to replat the whole thing and they're going to they're going to relay it out. So the reason why they're removing it is because they got to they want to relay it out and put the the easements where they need to be based on the new layout.
Yes.
So they're still making the easements and putting the drainage where they need to be.
Right. So they redid the drainage through here and then they have the eight-foot utility. You can see the lots are right here.
Okay.
Those four lots are right in here and they replatted them into this lot configuration. So there's some drainage easements here and then they created the eight-foot utility and minor drainage easements on the interior of all these lots too.
And they ended up putting some holding ponds or something else in there or for easements in their areas because of?
They do have some up in this area and then this area.
And you believe they have enough room for the drainage and the utilities in those areas with no problem?
Yes, these are large lots. They're five over five acres.
Okay. But if they change those lots and make them smaller, they still are going to be able to have that drainage and the things they need, no matter if they make them big or if they cut them down, which usually happens.
The P U D won't allow them to go below five acres unless they do a major P U D amendment, which would come in front of this commission.
Okay. And just to make sure then, would it show that there was a vacated major utility easement and drainage easement in case there is drainage issues?
Yes. So if they wanted to vacate any of these ones that they created for this plat, they would have to go through this vacation process again.
Okay. And we would know on that that we had vacated them for a reason back?
Mm-hmm. We vacated them because they're along this and with the new lot reconfigurations, they have different easements through here.
Okay, just making sure that they had enough drainage because if it doesn't affect their property, it might affect the lower above them.
Right. These are the ones that are have the worst areas for the drainage.
Thank you, Brittany, for answering my question.
Mm-hmm.
I'll move. Approval.
Take it.
Motion and second. Is there any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item J.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item J is ordinance amendment OA twenty-two dash zero one. It is to add section three twenty-one hard rock mining to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. It's to establish the hard rock mining requirements. I'm not sure how you want to how you want me to proceed through this. Do you want to go section by section? Do you want to take public comment? Do you?
I think we'll take a public comment unless the commission has other suggestions.
Are we having a timing? Three minutes?
Yep. And I don't know if we have the. So Cody, tell us the the process that the Planning Commission has gone through though first.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. So this was first heard before the Planning Commission back in February. We took some public comment. We took the Planning Commission's comments. It was it was stated to the Planning Commission at the time that the draft that they saw was going to get revamped. It took a couple of meetings to get it revamped and then I believe in either the end of March or the beginning of April, we put the what the current ordinance that you see in in front of you into place in front of them and we went through several meetings with making their changes, taking public comments. And they they recommended approval to the to the Board of Commissioners. So this has been through at least, I'd say, five or six Planning Commission meetings to get to the Board of Commissioners. And I believe three or four Commissioners have sat sat in on those meetings throughout the last five months, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect. So Cody, how much weight did the public comment have in the process?
So in in the last couple of months, we we've taken comments from the from the public. However, some comments that the public want, we just cannot add to the to the ordinance and some of it's actually in the ordinance. It's just not out there just directly. So for instance, there's a gentleman who wants water quality and water monitoring. If you look under section. Section F, operation plan, says an operation plan includes information required by S D A R seventy-four twenty-nine oh two. Part one section in that section of the state requires information on baseline testing for water quality and water level. So some of the information's in there, it's just not directly required in the section. It's just required as part of the stuff that they have to submit to our office.
Cody, what page is that on if you don't mind? I didn't.
Page five.
So Cody, it sounds to me like the original ordinance, some of those items were just strictly taken out and that's the part that I have a hard time trying to figure out. Are we making this an easier process or are we should we with the the water quality and the concerns with water, should we be just go in the other direction?
No, so so some of that was was directly taken out, like where there there would have been like a section F water quality. We we tried to shrink the ordinance but still have that information in there. I if you want, I can go to that. I can pull up that administrative rule and show you that that information still required, they're still required to submit that information to us. It's not. There's just so much we can actually do with that information for like for mining, we we have time, place, manner. The state occupies the field for for water and water quality. Even if we required them to do anything, all that information would be sent to the state anyways for the state to look at. So we're not really, it would just be an extra step that we're not able to really to really manage. The taking out the socioeconomic impact study that was mentioned too. If you look at our ordinance, it addressed a specific state codified law. If you read that codified law, it talks about that giving the power for the Board of Minerals to require a socioeconomic impact study, not that a socioeconomic impact study was there. So we were putting with that in our ordinance, we were saying that they have to submit it even though it's up to the Board of Minerals to be the ones who decide if that's actually required or not.
And last item I wanted to mention is that we have as a county commission, we have the authority to make our regulations more stringent than state regulations. We have to at least meet state regulations, but we can exceed state regulations according to some of the information I got.
I'll let Megan answer that question.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. That's actually not accurate. The individual that has been citing and saying that has been citing to a home rule statute, which does not apply to Pennington County.
Okay, I just want clarification so that I know where I'm going forward with this.
Yeah, so we're Dillon's rule, so we can only do what state statute specifically says what we can do and what can be inferred therefrom, but we can't do anything that is directly in conflict with state statute and specifically with mining. There is preemption, there's the Constitution, there's federal law, there's state and federal preemption. It's a particularly complex area of the law. So if the board would like a memorandum, I can submit one, but it is not accurate to say that we can do more than what the state and federal government allows, so.
So do we know, has the state reviewed what's being forced today?
In terms of?
As as far as their how it fits within their guidelines?
So they don't typically offer advice on local ordinances. Obviously, I have spoken to contacts that I have, but it's not official advice. I know that some of the topics have been discussed with the state, but I'm not going to go into specifics on the record. That's more of an attorney-client privilege type of conversation, so.
Okay. Commissioner Lauster.
So Megan, while you're up there, so if I understood what you said, you said the county cannot make any regulation more restrictive than the state. Is that across the board on everything or is it only solely pertaining to this? Because if I understand correctly from state statute and onsite wastewater treatment, we are more restrictive than what the state says. So is it in general that we can't make something more restrictive or is it across the board?
It's typically mine, I mean, it's mining in particular because the state does occupy the field, the state and the feds occupy the field. So it is difficult for us to do anything that is more restrictive because there is a ton of case law that says that we can't.
Mr. Chair, I I would like to either see some statute or some of the case law, if you don't mind, just for references so I can look at them. And the reason why it's important to me and and I've heard a lot of individuals complaining about it or asking about it, and I know part of the rest of the commission have, but where I'm concerned about the water issue is all you know about the P F O S people, the county has is losing revenue because that contamination has contaminated county land and really we can't do anything about it except basically lose the revenue because of the the damaged land. So my point being is, is I think the county should have some say, there should be some control that we have if something's coming in that if they leak water, I mean, I understand the discharge and the water drainage and the water permits, but if they cause a contamination, what is going to protect the county against that and how can we make them come and clean it up? I mean, do we make them bond to clean up? Can we not make them bond for cleanup? Because we may end up dealing with another situation like the base and then we've got another 30-year cleanup of people who've got contaminated land.
And I don't disagree with you from a public policy standpoint, but I am just strictly here to tell you what the law is and public policy is typically very different from the law.
So do we have a problem with getting a maybe a memo on those case laws to see how it impacts, to see what we can potentially request or at least see what other people requested and then the case law came back and said you can request this, but you can't request that or you can't do this, can't do that? I mean, I think it would be wise.
I, as a lawyer, may I?
Not yet. I, I think I have you here, uh, to call on. You'll have an opportunity.
I just wanted to address this one particular point.
No, thanks. So going back to Commissioner Lauster's request, is that something that we could...
I can put together a memorandum, it would be client attorney privilege, so it would not be available to the public.
Okay, very good. I do have a number of, unless there's other questions first, I have a number of, of speaker request forms. And, uh, first one I call on is, uh, Lilias Jardine.
You're doing three minutes per?
Pardon me?
Are you doing three minutes per?
Three minutes for each. And I can't see the lights, so you need to explain the lights. Holly.
Yeah, up in front of Mr. Chair, um, Chairman Drews, is a little black box. There's three lights, red, yellow, and green. Your time starts when the light turns green. When it turns yellow, that means you have thirty seconds remaining, and we ask that you wrap up your comments. And when the light flashes red, your time is up.
I see it now, thank you. I'm, my name is Dr. Lilias Jardine, I live in Rapid City in District One. And, um, can I ask that Mr. Ellison come up first or should I just do my comments?
Do your comments.
Okay. Um, this is a preventive measure that would prevent damage to our economy, health, water, uh, in the future. Mining currently is less than one percent of employment in the county. Uh, but if, uh, some of the companies that are involved have their way, it could become quite a bit larger. And there's a map in your, um, your packet that I have a larger version of, and I can leave that with the, uh, person here. So the, the changes that have been made in this ordinance weaken the protection for our water and our communities and our economy. And for example, um, public input for, uh, strengthening, um, excuse me, I went in the wrong line. For example, uh, the duration of a permit was changed from ten years to five years, or five years to ten years. So it would be ten years in between permit reauthorizations instead of five. That means we have less oversight, you have less oversight of what is going on. The Board of Commissioners having the final say on these permits was removed entirely. And the Planning Commission was given the decision-making authority. The socioeconomic, uh, study, as was mentioned, was removed. A county reclamation plan for water, it's what I'm most concerned about, but for other things as well, was removed. Um, information in the application was removed that would specifically be about the applicant. And the distance of, from, from mining to lot lines went from, from two hundred feet to only fifty feet. I live within a mile of the assignment operation. And I can clearly hear what's going on there on a daily basis when they are operating. And, um, so fifty feet is just kind of ridiculous in my mind. Um, the only property owners who would be notified about an application would be those within half a mile. Again, this is, um, not good by my own experience. Um, there are also a couple of definition issues, um, in the definition for hard rock mining operation and the definition for mining operations. Neither one of these includes disposal of refuse from above-ground mining, from open pit mining. They both are just for underground mining. And it's very important that the waste rock, which can be, uh, millions of tons of waste rock, uh, is covered under this ordinance. So those are some of the quick things that I noticed and some of the points that I wanted to make. And I will stand for questions. I have all the sections, for example, in my notes, if people want to know sections.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Lilias, did you have any input, uh, since February, uh, direct input, uh, on where we're at today?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, we had public comments, I just wondered if you were at some of those meetings and, uh, and discussions.
I was at some of the meetings and I had some input, but pretty minimal compared to today or my original input.
Okay.
Any other questions of Ms. Jardine? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one I have is, uh, from Bruce Ellison.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Bruce Ellison, I'm an attorney here in Rapid City. I put on my sheet that I was appearing individually, uh, I'm actually going to be appearing on behalf of the Black Hills Clean Water Alliance.
Black Hills what?
Clean Water Alliance, and I hope to be coming back at a later time to give my non-lawyer presentation. First of all, three minutes I would submit is woefully too little time to allow for public input when everybody else seems to operate on no time limits. The notice for this hearing was so insufficient that it produces very few people here, although you go out in the community and a lot of people are concerned about this. I had previously asked Mr. Roskinak a question that these hearings be PSA announced, radio, TV, and that has not been done. This is one of the most important ordinances that this county is working on this year and maybe even in the decade, if not many decades. The people should be allowed to know these hearings are taking place. I found it terribly confusing trying to figure out which draft was up for discussion. And I'll get to some of these points. The idea that an applicant in this commission or the planning commission has an attorney-client relationship or that is privileged is ridiculous. Any applicant who comes for a public permit, every part of that should be public. And I'm hearing this from state agencies and I'm hearing it from federal agencies. All you're doing is masking our ability to know what's going on and how it's being determined. I said in the beginning, and I apologize, Mr. Drews, for interrupting. I got so frustrated hearing the state talking because I'm working on only that issue. The state advised the planning board that they could not put in anything that was more stringent in ordinance. That is legal fiction. The only statute that talks about stringent may not apply, as pointed out, because it talks about home rule. Well, this may be part of home rule. And it talks about neither ordinances adopted thereunder may set standards or requirements which are lower or less stringent, but they may set standards and requirements that are higher or more stringent than those imposed by the state. Now, that may not apply here. And what may apply though is this. This mining ordinance that's being proposed is hardly more stringent than the state. If it is, it's de minimis. All of the key points were stripped out because the board was misadvised. I ask leave of the commission to keep making my presentation for a few more minutes.
Any, any questions of Mr. Ellison?
I do.
Commissioner, head cut.
So, um, you guys have a Black Hills Clean Water Alliance, and you said it needs, the word needs to get out. I guess if I was, if I was running an alliance, if I was running something that was against this, I would put the energy and time into contacting people and putting out myself if, if, if government wasn't putting enough information out that you thought should be put out. I guess I do that myself with my business.
Sure.
Uh, number two, um, I do agree, um, I do think, and I'm not trying to be against Megan, but I think you have to do what the state and the federal does. As a commission, you can't take away from the state and federal what they do, but you can add...
Yes.
To that law. That's what's hard rock wa- mining, I, I'm not hard rock mining, but what was the other mining we did with the?
Gravel.
Gravel, okay. So I remember them saying that, but I don't know, I, I'm, to be fair to Megan, I don't know that it's, it's the same in hard rock. Because we could always, like I said, um, we had to do what the law, the state law and the federal law did, but we had, we could add to it if we wanted to be more stringent. But we had to make sure, um, that we did what they said first and then added to it. So just, just my comment, Bruce. So on that case, um, I don't know that for fact, I just remember being on the committee and had, had of that.
And, and I understand that there is no statute that says a mining ordinance can't be more stringent. There is no decision by the South Dakota Supreme Court that says that a mining ordinance cannot be more stringent. And in fact, there's forty-five six B four, which is the local government permits. And all it says in there is, in a mining ordinance, you can't impose a bond which is higher than what the state says. But it would seem to me you could say, we want to determine what an appropriate bond would be. And while you couldn't impose a higher bond, you could say to the state, because the statute says it goes to the state, we think this bond is grossly inadequate.
So I think it's kind of like, it's not that one, but I think it's kind of like what you said. I think you have to do what state and federal law do, you cannot take away from any of their laws.
But you can, right.
But I think you can add to them. But Megan, if you want to look that, and maybe I'm wrong, Megan, um, and maybe Quinn knows that too. Because we did that, like I said, in the gravel, uh, mining. We did some really positive things, and we worked with the, uh, mining company and they agreed to those, uh, those things, like the distance and a few other things with us. And it became, I thought it was a pretty positive way to work with the people that were, that were against and for in, in a way that we actually turned out to do both things, so it worked out good.
And I have to agree with it, I was in with most of those, uh, meetings as well. And there were things that I do remember us, I think the final ordinance, we added some stuff to it that wasn't originally in there as well, so.
Seven eighteen twenty, adoption ordinances to protect groundwater authorized. The county may adopt ordinances for the purpose of protecting public groundwater supplies from pollution. Now, it talks about wellhead protection, it talks about a state wellhead protection plan, which I couldn't even find.
But Bruce, does it say, does it, but we still have to do the state and federal law. So if it's already in there, um, for that protection, um, I, I guess I didn't understand why we needed to add to it. But if it's something that it's a distance or it's a something else, I, I guess I'm, I think the state does pretty well for protecting on water and...
Actually, I would tell, say, ma'am, from my experience in twelve years working the Water Management Board, the state does a horrendous job of protecting our water. That's why this ordinance is so important.
Right.
For example, the state issues a water appropriation permit, a million gallons a day for mining operation. The state says next year, tell us how much you actually used. This county could say, we want an inspector to be able to know every day how much is being used.
But do we do that, Bruce? Do we do that to any other business? So we're saying, if, if you're saying they're contaminated, I could see that. But I'm saying, do we do that to any other business? And we are, I, we have school minds, we, for me, I, not against mining. The main thing with mining for me is make sure the state and federal is taking care of those laws and anything that might be, um, something that helps us in the sense. But, um, that, like I said, some of the distance we changed, some of those things for the people, it was good. But I haven't been proven, even on your website, I, I looked at some of your website. Some of that's not fact, what you guys are putting out there by what I've countered or contradicted from people in the mining and not mining industry in the water. My sister is a geologist, by the way, and, uh, I have friends that are geologists as well that like to protect the water. So some of those facts and stuff that you guys are putting out and putting fear monger stuff on people with some of the water stuff, um, I, I don't agree with, so.
Do you drink the water out of the, out of Belfus River? Would you eat the fish out of the Belfus River? We want to prevent that from happening here.
Yes, but...
I live along Rapid Creek, ma'am. If you want to depend upon the state and the federal government, then you shouldn't do anything here.
Bruce, I've never depended on anything. I've depended on facts and information, sir. So yours has to be facts and information.
I fax anything.
And you know that about me. I look it up, I talk to your group, I look at your information, and then I go back and I don't rely on the mining company, I don't rely on you. I go back to people that do this for a living. So some of your stuff...
I do this for a living too.
Yes, so your stuff, that's your opinion though. I don't take just your opinion. I look it up. So you're making it sound like I'm, I'm just, I don't know about the water issues or I don't know about some...
Ma'am, I'm not trying to get into and argue with you about that or about the website, I have nothing to do with the website.
Well, you're telling me I'm wrong.
I know this is an effort.
You're telling me I'm wrong and I don't know and I, the Belfus River and stuff, sir? So let's be up straight.
Okay, let's be up straight.
Okay, so we're done talking, I'm done.
The county has very, very clear authority.
Yeah.
Under forty-five six B and seventy-eight twenty, to do a very serious water protection. It's not there yet, it's far from there. What I would like to recommend...
I've seen some of your water stuff and the city didn't agree with it. I went and spoke against it, a bunch of ranchers and people came with that. Those weren't facts, sir. So that's why that was shut down with your group and others, so let's talk about facts.
I know that you have a bias in this instance, and it's been displayed for years. I'm sorry to have to call you out on that.
Any other questions of Mr. Ellison?
I'm here to talk about the law.
Not fact either, I go by law.
Your ti- your time is up, Mr. Ellison, so.
I am very concerned that this process, the way it is going, is actually little more, sir, with all due respect, than a sham process. If you do not pass the ordinances...
Your time is up, Mr. Ellison.
Down, Ellis.
This is the easy way for us to protect our water, so I hope you remember that.
Yours is also biased, sir.
Yes, I'm in favor of the fact, yes.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh, my name is Rebecca Turk, and I am a resident of Pennington County. I'm here testifying on behalf of myself. I am a former organizer and political director of a nonprofit organization that's dedicated to preserving local control and helping county officials utilize that tool for the benefit of their residents. In that capacity, I've helped to organize trainings and develop model ordinances to assist county elected and appointed officials in developing strong ordinances and using the ordinances they had in place to protect quality of life, natural resources, property values, and more. And I'm going to curtail, uh, some of my testimony, I do have it written out in long form, which I can share with you as well. So South Dakota law provides for broad authority of counties to regulate development within their borders through the use of zoning ordinances and the conditional use permitting process. While the legislature has chipped away at local control somewhat over the past several years, it has not undermined the central tenet, which is that counties with zoning ordinances have the final say over projects within their jurisdiction. The state's part in any permitting process is typically limited to the basics required under federal environmental laws. It's not designed to supersede or replace county decision-making. And the state permit to conduct an activity does not supersede the county's decision-making process. That's the literal definition of local control. So I want to just kind of leave you with one last note, which is, um, I believe, having seen this process and, and, and kind of sensing that planning and zoning potentially punted this forward, you know, with a sense of uncertainty about what was, you know, what the county is able to do and what they're not able to do in this process. I, I want to leave you with, um, the truth, that is, a strong ordinance not only protects your county and your constituents, it's also going to save you, the commissioners, an incredible amount of work on the backend. It makes the process much more clear when you have a strong ordinance. Makes the process much more clear for applicants. You don't end up with a bunch of yahoos and speculators applying for permits because the stated criteria in the ordinance are weak. A weak ordinance means that every stipulation that should have been, oop, thirty seconds, uh, made clear upfront in your ordinance now has to be implemented as a condition on each individual permit. And that's often where applicants who thought the process looked easy end up feeling like it was unfair and suing over a denial or over additional conditions that they can't meet. So your condition, your constituents, and, and that includes myself, are depending on you to protect our communities, our economy, our water supply, and our quality of life. So please don't abdicate your power to do so. I'm happy to take questions or otherwise assist, thank you.
Questions for Ms. Turk?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So you've read the ordinance as written. So if you, uh, had to make changes, say that, you know, this is what I don't like, this is, I think we need to approve on this, and if this doesn't get approved today, I'd be more unwilling to sit down with you and listen to those because, uh, there's a lot of moving parts here and, and, uh, I think we need to listen to both sides very carefully.
I appreciate that, and I, I'm not sure if that was the question, but I'm definitely happy to sit down with, with you. I think there are a lot of...
I'll sit down with Bruce, I'll sit down with anybody.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of potential improvements, some of which were in previous drafts of the ordinance and have been stripped, so.
But I lived on Rapid Creek for fourteen years, and I know how precious that water is, and we all know how precious water is, so. I think we really got to make sure we got our ducks in our own this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Hilding.
Hi, I'm Nancy Hilding, president of Prairie Hills Auto Bond Society. I agree with Bruce. Three minutes is completely inadequate. I think state law requires two readings of ordinances, so you're going to have a second reading on this. I hope you don't decide this today, that you continue this hearing and we can continue to submit comments. Okay, I gave Holly, I think, a sheet just today, which I hope she handed out to you. I have lots to talk about. I probably won't get to it in three minutes. At here, I have the question, can Pennington County do anything other than xerox the state law? And I have given you the law that allows you to do extra stuff. The law that restricts you with respect to mining, you can't have things that are inconsistent or in conflict with applicable state laws or administrative rules. It doesn't say you cannot be more stringent. It says you cannot be, you cannot be inconsistent or in conflict. God knows what that means. I certainly don't. Okay, so you might need to look at case law for that. But it doesn't say you can't be more stringent. It just says you can't be in conflict. So what does that mean? Does that mean you have to xerox the state law? Or does that mean where the state law exists, you have to comply with it, but you can add extra stuff? And I'm not an attorney. Okay. So then the last one here is the state law can't be more, state rules cannot be more stringent than the feds. And you have to comply with state rule and the rules can't be more stringent than the feds. Okay, so I'm going to get into something here that I think is very important. We were told we couldn't have a socioeconomic study because the state's attorney objected to it because it wasn't consistent with state law or wasn't more stringent, whatever it was. I have included for you in here the section of state law that allows for a socio-impact study. So state law allows for socio-impact study. So Pennington County asking for a socio-impact study does not conflict with state law. It's consistent with state law. And Lawrence County has this and has had it for years and has never been sued about that. So they tossed this out, in my opinion, based on incorrect advice from the state's attorney. Okay, so here it gets into an irony, which you need to think about. You have a whole section in there on a road and traffic analysis and study. As far as I can tell, there's nothing in state law that mandates a road and traffic analysis. That could be considered to be under the socioeconomic. But I think the road and traffic study is very important to Pennington County. You had it in the sand and gravel. If you follow the state's attorney advice that you just have to xerox the state rules, you can't have your road and traffic.
Your time is up.
All right. Well, I had a whole bunch of other points I wanted to make, but I don't have time to make them.
Any, any questions, Ms. Hilding?
Thank you, Ms. Nancy, for that. The law that we are, because you were on the first, sorry, chairman, I should say chairman. You were on the first meeting where we had went through this and you're right. That's why I said I think there, you have to do what's in state law. But I think the county can be more stringent. They just have to do the state and the federal law and then add to what they have.
Well, I, and I think in the process of looking at this hard rock mining law, that a lot of very good stuff has been tossed out on the advice of the state's attorney, which was improper and inadequate, which is why you need to continue this thing for a little bit more because we need to resolve whether you're only allowed to xerox the state law or whether you can add stuff. And if you can add stuff, whole bunches of stuff was thrown out. And so we need to go back and it needs to be longer than this particular hearing. We need to continue this, get some legal advice and address whether all the stuff that was tossed out really should have been tossed out.
So, Ms. Nancy, to the previous guy, there's going to be another meeting. So you guys can actually put more, you know, a second reading, right? Am I, we're not having a second reading? I don't think so.
I think you're required by state statute to have two readings.
You it, but it's not required. Okay. This is the second for the board? So I thought this was the first, but it is the second.
When was the first reading?
Ms. Holly Dino or Ms. Megan? Okay, so the planning commission is first reading, the board is second reading.
I don't know. I would have to look at statute. I don't know if I gave you the statute on first and second readings or.
Is that correct? So we're on the second. Okay. But yes, you can continue. Schedule a special hearing. The board can do what they.
Well, then I suggest you continue this hearing and continue to accept public comments. I think this is a very important issue. And when we try to find out, you know, when we write and ask and try to find out what the state's attorney legal reasoning is, we get told that that's the attorney's privilege and we can't see it. So, you know, it's, it's not transparent. And I had a whole bunch of other.
Any questions, Ms. Hilding?
What, that I wanted to make that I can't because it's just three minutes.
Is most of that contained within this document?
This contains the law that I was going to reference this. I went to all of my points. But it doesn't have the rationale. I wanted you to add a clause about endangered species to your, to several places and that you can't take endangered species. Actually, when you're requiring the reclamation plan pursuant to something or other, you will get the endangered species information in that. So me asking you to get endangered species information is not necessary. It's just that you should have the option to reject something if it's going to harm endangered species.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. I've always, I've always appreciated your, your stuff. So I did read it and I appreciate that, Ms. Nancy.
And I gave you, I can't get into it. I gave you in the packet the Fish and Wildlife Service, some public notice about listing the northern long-eared bat as endangered instead of threatened. This is a local species that's severely at risk and could be impacted by mining, which is why I think we need an endangered species concept added to this law. And I, and I agree with whoever spoke. The buffers are not large enough. And your buffers should also include not just people, but domestic animals.
Ms. Hilding, your time, your time is up. Thank you. Larry Mann.
Mr., oh, Mr. Chair, I just had a quick question, just for some clarification. Was there any special hearings at all or were they all just in the planning and zoning? Holly or?
I don't know what you mean by special hearing.
Well, when we did the hard rock mining, we did special hearings for the hard rock mining, for the gravel mining. I know the planning and zoning did. I don't know if the board of commission did. Did y'all have separate special hearing for that one? Do you remember?
I don't, I don't think they did on this one because I thought everybody was, this was brought forward by us and everybody was happy that we were doing this one, from what I remember.
I mean, how many times was this heard before planning commission?
Started in February.
Co-sag environmental planner. It started February ninth and I believe it was five or six. I would have to look back on it to know exactly how many meetings there were for the planning commission, but I'd safely say five or six.
And follow up, Mr. Chair. From the, from the one that came to us, the last meeting of the planning and zoning and the previous meeting, was there a significant amount of change up until that one? Or was there just a little bit of change? And I'm only asking that question because if there was a significant amount of change, it might be wise to at least continue it, if not have a special meeting for some input, is what I'm trying to figure out.
So we put out the, at the very first meeting, there was the, you received the red line version. That was the ordinance that was put out at the very first meeting. At that meeting, we stated that there was going to be vast changes to it. And we were, that first meeting was basically for the, the special meeting for public comment on what people would want to see in the ordinance. And then the ordinance that you see today was put out to the planning commission, I believe, the beginning of May, either end of April, beginning of May. And it went through all those meetings until the final approval on June thirteenth, I believe is when that was approved. So the version that you see today went through planning commission for some changes for at least two or three meetings.
So, Chairman.
Commissioner Edco.
I see where you're going. I don't have a problem with the special meeting or having this. So we continue it only for the fact that it's pretty, it's very important. It's very important to the people here. And if they need to get more people here, I'm okay listening to it. The main thing is we're telling facts and we're telling the information that you're not getting mad at us because we're trying to figure this out, but we're not biased by any means. It's, you're looking at facts and information from both sides and then you're deciphering that to make an ordinance. Some of this stuff, I don't mind having, I'll just tell you up straight, having the distance further, we did that. And there's just minor changes that I would look at on this. And again, we've had many changes on it. So the general public has not, I don't think, seen all this. Just to be fair. So I'm with Travis. If we had to continue it or have a special meeting, I'm not against that. I'd like the public to be able, whether we agree or disagree, be able to set forth what they need to say to us and what's important to them. So same with the other side. So if we need to have a special meeting or another meeting or continue this, I'd be in favor of that.
No, I don't think there's any issue in continuing it. I don't know if there's necessary to have a special meeting in regard to it, so. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskin.
I would like to see the, in written, black and white, where it says that the county does not have the authority to be more stringent. I want to see that in black and white because right now, that's the biggest concern I get. I'm hearing two totally different stories. And I want to see which one's right.
Okay. Larry Mann.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, members of the commission. My name is Larry Mann. I am the vice president of a kind of a newly organized group called the South Dakota Mineral Industries Association, kind of the replacement for the old South Dakota Mining Association. And I've got about 35 years of experience going through permitting requirements for mining companies. Going back to, I think, Wharf Resources was originally permitted 40 years ago. And those laws have changed over the course of years. A lot of legislation has come through over the, over the course of years that, that changed with the times. So I think that the mining law at the state level is pretty much up to date, even though we haven't had a permit, other than maybe an expansion or amendment. We haven't had a permit for a new mine. And my only concern is, I don't have any real heartburn with what's in the ordinance. This issue about, about something being more stringent. To me, the reason that there are some people that want things more stringent is because they can make it much more difficult for anybody to get a permit and make valid legitimate use of their property is a stumbling block. The state, for instance, has a statute that says that state statute can be no more stringent for the, than the feds in those strategic areas. And think briefly about what the chain of command is here. The supremacy clause grants the administration of Clean Water and Clean Air Act to the feds. The feds have exclusive authority over it. Now, the way that they manage it, as they do in most states, is by the grant of administrative authority back to the state. In other words, the state can administer Clean Air and Clean Water Act under the supervision of EPA. But if we get out of line, EPA can come down and say, can't do that. My concern is that this is a very complex issue and I hope you know what you're getting yourself into. Because what we've got now is a lot of stack of information, whether it comes from the feds, the states, the forest service, we've got all of this information. And it seems to me, in terms of efficiency, is we ought to go back and take a look at how all of those laws come together and make an, make an efficient ordinance. I think there's a lot of things that you could say, you know, we trust the state to do this. They've done it for 30 years. We don't see a problem. And if there are areas where there are problems, that's fine. But I think you've got a situation where you're going to find it very, very hard to get a permit application that's three ring binders that take up eight feet of space. And you don't have the resources to adequately address it. The state does. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, my time's up. I'll stand by your question.
Any questions, Mr. Mann?
Chairman.
Commissioner Edco.
So, Mr. Mann, I was the chair of the gravel mining and we worked with many companies and we did see, as Travis, binders and binders from states and feds. But we still worked with the public and we worked with the mining companies to make some compromises. So I don't think those were unbinding for those mining companies and saying, holy cow, we can't do this. What they did is they came up with a common solution. Not as good, you're not always going to find a solution, but hopefully something close to some of those, some of the things that people are talking about. Like I said, if it's based on fact, I'm listing, if you just want to say this is going, this is the way it is and it should be and we are the final say and we are very biased, that's not a fact. Again, I don't think we're, I don't think these people that are concerned about the water are stumbling block in a sense. They have real fears and concerns. They'll need to be addressed by our, our mining people. I didn't see any kind of problem with that with the other mining companies, with Pete Lean and the other companies, if you recall, Holly and Brittany. It was, it was a really good solution. It's not something simple. And I don't think you just pass something without trying to look at the concerns, whether they're right or wrong, and at least answer the question. So I think both sides need to be able to discuss a little bit more on those facts and that information. And if, if we need to be more binding or a little bit more stringent, like I said, the distance, the blasting, the different things, made a huge difference. And it made, you didn't make everybody happy, which is, you never, you never are. But you're also looking at both sides a little bit more and some of that give and take, that's not going to hurt a mining company or anybody else in the, in the general public to try to find that solution. So for me, I think there's some minor stuff we can do that might help with some of the concerns and other things. They need to know the laws and the, and the facts on it and be presented out here a little bit more in detail. So if that can happen, I think.
First of all, I agree with everything you're saying. And the, the point is that we, in the industry, and I'm speaking for the industry, I think that we're prepared. We've got access to a lot of resources.
Right.
And we've got a lot of people, school of mines, a lot of people with many, many years of experience. And if the idea is to pass an ordinance which addresses local issues, notwithstanding the state law, hey, here's where we think the state law's come up short or here's where we think the state law doesn't necessarily apply in Pennington County, that's great. I mean, I see no problem with that. The concern that I think that the mining industry has is that you will pass something that is restrictive enough that it may cross that line of regulatory taking.
Well, there.
And if you get into that issue, then, then you've got some.
And I have that, Larry, but that's why we have both sides. We know the laws. We know the facts. We've seen the binders. We've seen, we have the experts on this side and the experts on this side. And there's a, there's a common ground where you're still being able to do business, as you see from the gravel companies. And they're still happy with the ordinance, not happy with everything, but neither was the public. So we didn't do everything for the public.
Oh, we're looking for it, I think, you know.
That's what I'm saying. You've got to be able to operate a business, which you guys understand, but to be not restrictive enough where you are telling these people basically that they can't do a business. It's to protect your water or the distance. Some of those things can be a little bit different. We did stuff with some well testing and some different things on some of the gravel. Can we do some of that? We might be able to do some of that with where, where you guys test it. If I'm correct, both of you guys test the water, you do the wells, you do some of that stuff already. And that's why they agreed to it, Pete Lean did, because they did it anyway. But it made the public feel more comfortable with water protection and some of those things that maybe you guys already do, but maybe they don't have all the facts on it.
Exactly. And I have no problem. Exactly. And I, I have no problem. Just, the only thing that I would suggest to you is just keep in mind that there are some significant resources out there. Technical, scientific, uh, learned individuals who can help provide that information to you
That's what we.
on an unbiased basis, and I just hope you'll take advantage of that. Thank you.
So Larry, uh, just a quick question. Uh, I know that you've followed this, you've been in the industry for a long time. Are there, are there things that are being changed at the, at the state level on a frequent basis or at the, at D A N R or at the legislative level that's being introduced that would change part of the environment for hard rock mining?
Um, I don't, you know, I think the, the, the thing is, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that there has been so little new mining activity. We haven't, we haven't permitted a new mine in a long time. And so some of these issues haven't come up. Um, I would submit to you that if, if they do, you'll see it in the legislature. And that's probably a good place to bang out those differences. I think the biggest difference that I see, and, and I've been doing this, I'm a fourth generation Home State employee. And I've been associated with this industry for thirty-five years. And I think the biggest thing I see is not only a change in the attitude of the people who are managing, uh, mining companies, but I've seen a dramatic change in the methodology in the way that mining companies go about, um, recovering minerals. It's changed dramatically. There are places that I've been to personally that, um, it would be very hard to tell that was actually a mine. Um, there's a little place in Canada called Escape Creek. It was a fly-in, fly-out camp. These guys would fly in, stay for two weeks, and then a new crew would come in. And the biggest impact on the, on the whole, um, uh, area was the residents, the dormitories for housing these guys, dormitory and a, and a cafeteria and those things. That was the biggest surface disturbance. They did have a few repair buildings and, and an assay shed and that's that kind of things. But they ramped down into the mine. So what you saw was one at it. And they ramped down into the mine and they ramped back out. Uh, there, there's so many differences in the way that, that this industry can be conducted, and it is all over the world. And of course, we have interest in, in Pennington County from the biggest mining companies in the world. They're well-funded, but the, the best management practices that they put in place, they put in place, not for Pennington County, they put these things in place for, for the world. Um, and, and they are, it's almost regardless of what, how lax, for instance, uh, the rules may be in an African country with regard to mining. They're doing it by their own rules. And they're doing it to make sure that they're doing it right, that they reduce their liability, that they minimize their cost of, you know, things when they, when you, when you make an, when you, if you make an error, it, it's a huge cost. Nobody wants to make a mistake because it costs so much money to make it right.
Sure.
That, I think that's a big change in the way the industry's operated as well.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate it. Quinn Neff.
Morning, Chairman Drews and Commissioners. I'm Quinn Neff, President of the South Dakota Mineral Association. As Larry mentioned, we're pretty new. Uh, we do have a full board with a diverse background in water issues, regulatory issues. And so I think as an association, uh, we'd be happy to take a little more time and send back some comments on this ordinance. Um, just a few things that I saw going through it, and, and what I did was I, I printed off, I think it's forty-five uh, dash six B, which is the state mine permitting application laws. And so I'd encourage you guys to take a look at those. And I also printed off Lawrence County's, uh, ordinance. And I know I think the Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at, at Lawrence County's. Uh, but a couple of things that I, I saw in Lawrence County's, and I'll just be specific to the ordinance, is once an application is received in Lawrence County and approved, the first step is they have just the informational hearing. There's no voting. It's just the informational hearing for the applicant to present the project to the commission and the public. And an opportunity for the public to hear the project and maybe have comments on it. And so you're not at a hearing where, you know, everybody's anticipating a final decision. It's just information. And I think, I think that would be an important, uh, step in, in our process. Uh, and what comes out of that hearing is a site tour that gets scheduled for the commissioners to actually go see the project. So those were, that was something I thought, uh, it's really transparent to the public and the commission in Lawrence County, and I think that'd be something to look at adding. Um, but I, I think as a first step, I think a lot of people have stated it, Commissioner Roskinak, about just, let's take a look at what areas in the zoning ordinance for the county we can strengthen that state law doesn't already cover, or, or like Larry said, that we can improve on, you know, whether it be for water issues and things like that with this draft ordinance. So we can come back to another hearing and say, well, here's the areas we're not in conflict with state law that we could improve on. And so I think that would give both, both, everybody a chance to kind of know what we can focus on in the ordinance versus going down a path and finding out we're in conflict with state law and, and things like that. I have some other specific things in the ordinance I'll just mention real quick. It says, uh, an application can be denied. Uh, Lawrence County, just add the simple thing onto that, what's the reason for denial? An applicant might want to know why they got denied. I mentioned the informational meeting and site visit. They do put timelines, uh, for decisions from planning and zoning. Once an application is deemed complete, uh, they do have a timeline for planning and zoning to make a decision. And they also have a timeline uh, for the commissioners to make a decision after planning and zoning is approved of. And, and then, uh, the socioeconomic study, you know, that's something that is in Lawrence County's, um, ordinance. And so I'd be interested to know on that.
That's sixteen oh three, right? Ordinance sixteen oh three?
For Lawrence County?
Yeah.
No, it's twenty point zero zero one.
Say it again?
Twenty point zero zero one. And so their ordinance is about seven pages long, covers a lot of, you know, and they've had mining for a hundred and forty years in Lawrence County. So they've seemed to make it work. So I think that'd be some, some first steps, let's check on the state law conflicts, see what we can do, uh, and go from there.
Questions, Mr.?
Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Higgin.
So, again, I think it's a good idea. I think that the general public should be able to submit theirs. Mining should submit theirs and then both sides being able to look at it, um, and, and come back with the comments. Um, it, it is complicated. Mining is complicated. And full disclosure, I did go to Quinn and, I don't know what group you were with, Quinn, I'll just say, um, I took my husband up there. Um, they were talking about mining and what they were doing, uh, stake and some other stuff. Um, I go to lots of meetings. I went to the water meeting at the city. I've done all kinds of meetings. So it's not one side or the other. So, uh, again, um, I like to know information. I like to know facts. I do read your comments. And I, and I do appreciate both sides. Again, when we did our mining audits before, uh, that's how we came up with what we ended up with in the end is by both sides. Uh, Nancy remembers that. Um, some of it, we got a little bit beat up on, but, um, again, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with people disagreeing with me, but just show me facts and information and not just hearsay about what you think. Does that make sense? Because we have to do that for the general public. We have to do that for all people, for both sides. Um, what you think, I appreciate what you think, but I got to base it on facts and information. So I've worked with the tribes, uh, Mark, uh, with Pace Law. I've worked with some other people up in those areas that wanted to show me stuff. So, um, I've been in, in a few different areas and, uh, been taken up to, what was the mine we went up to look at, the water source?
Oh, Keystone.
Stone around that area. So, um, just different people from the tribes and other people that have talked to me or taken me to Pace Law and other places to look at, uh, water sources and land and, um, also was on Rapid Creek and Riparian and some other stuff, uh, to look at. Rapid Creek and Brittany can, I don't know how many meetings we had with that, to look at water sources and stuff. So again, information is good for this commission. And I don't think, for me, I'm not ready to pass this today. I think we need more information from the mining and the general public again, and giving them a chance to speak, um, on this. Um, and to find out Ross, uh, Commissioner Roskinak's right to, um, see if we can be more stringent legally in one sense, but still, uh, run a efficient mining company, um, and still have the public feel like they are, um, able to give some input and still, um, get some more facts on the information on both sides.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Go with Travis, go first.
Thank you. Uh, Quinn, I got a couple, just a, and really it's just more comments since you, you know, you asked and see if we would postpone one and so you could do some research and put some things together after reading the ordinance. A lot of the comments that I've actually received, most individuals that we've maybe have seen on the opposite side of supporting something, they're actually supportive of this. They're just asking for a few more, uh, things for protection. And the ones that I'm seeing, uh, water protection should be a priority. Uh, they would like some other minerals added, pegmatite minerals. Uh, socioeconomic issues should be addressed, uh, and the residents should be protected from the mining operation itself and also protected from impacts of exploration. Those are the bulk of what I'm seeing. I'm not seeing any major concerns with it overall. In fact, I think it's a pretty good ordinance in general from what we've had to work through some other ordinances in the past. I mean, this is actually kind of drilled down to some of those. So I don't know if that's what your group is looking at and probably a couple of other things, but if they are, I would encourage you all to, to take a look at those things and bring back some information on, on those particular, um, topics, because I'd like to hear from, from y'all as well.
Yeah, no, I, I think the main thing is there shouldn't be a hurry on this because we don't technically really have a mining industry for precious metals in Pennington County. As Larry said, nineteen eighty-four was Wharf's last permit. That was the last one we had. So I, I think taking our time on this, uh, and another, another interesting point is we've never in the Black Hills had a modern, uh, precious metals mine on federal lands. There's never been a permitted precious metals mine on federal lands. Now, we see like the old, you know, pre-clean water act. We see, you know, historic mining stuff, but nothing modern. So I don't think we should be in a hurry. I think take our time and make it right and.
Thank you.
And as an industry, we appreciate an ordinance that gives you a, a map of what the process is if there is going to be an application. So.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So this whole process takes me back to when I was in Western Australia years ago. Three hundred miles inland to a gold mining town that Home State had had an interest in. It was, uh, Calgary. And they didn't have water there. They didn't, you couldn't get wells. You had to pump the water from Perth, Australia to get water to Calgary. And that pipeline broke down once. And there was a period of time, uh, where water was more valuable than gold. So I always think of that story, you know, what's more valuable, the gold or the water and stuff? I think the issue here is just to make sure that we don't jeopardize our water.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Quinn, there's, on some of the correspondence that I've received, uh, they're pushing for, uh, the same restrictions on explor- exploration as they are on mining. And I know you've been involved in exploration. Uh, is there a difference that we should be taking into consideration on the?
I don't believe so. I think the, the state process for exploration permits, uh, is pretty straightforward. They cover, you know, I've seen some comments about having wildlife surveys. That's part of the state's process for any exploration drilling on private lands, uh, water issues. So I, I think, you know, and you can look at exploration holes as being half the size of your domestic water well, but using the same process to drill it, but the industry plugs those holes. Whereas a water well's left open, it's a bigger diameter. You know, if there was someone with bad intentions, that's a higher risk for contaminating water than a drill hole that may be open for seven days while we drill it and then plugged at the end of that from, from the bottom to the top. So I think very minimal impacts from exploration drilling. And I would say there's probably been tens of thousands of holes drilled in the Black Hills. And I'm not aware of any incident that harmed human health or wildlife from exploration drilling, so.
Any further questions, Mr. Neff? Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you, Quinn.
Carla Marshall.
Good afternoon. Thought you were going to forget me. Hi, my name is, um, thank you for allowing me to comment. My name is Carla Ray Marshall. I am a resident here in the sacred hush-up under the Black Hills, T G territory under the eighteen sixty-eight Fort Laramie Treaty. I'm a member of the Shimer Su tribe, but my comment today is not to be considered a form of tribal consultation. Um, I do support the hard rock mining ordinance. However, I believe that currently the ordinance amendment O A twenty-two dash one is weak in areas of great concern. As many of you heard today, um, an ordinance is only as strong as you make it to protect our water and land from destructive mining and potential water, uh, contamination and, and water usage. And like you said, many of you have heard about, um, our main concern is, is water. Water is more valuable than gold as, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect said. Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to add that, um, I've been doing this work for many years, um, protecting water. I, I also sit on steering committees for the Western Mining Action Network, which is a organization with over three hundred members from Canada all the way down to Texas. Um, we deal with mining issues, especially, um, within, um, grassroots communities and indigenous communities. Um, I would like to mention too, we talked some about Wharf today. Um, and back in February, um, when the state was hearing on, uh, different ordinances or, you know, different, different, um, laws, they, um, wanted to do one on a, um, cyanide, banning cyanide in mining. Um, we had heard that Wharf was such a good neighbor and they never had a spill. However, South Dakota does have a, um, spills map or toxic spills map, interactive toxic spills map. And I went on that map and I looked and I found that on February fourth, or not February fourth, July fourth, actually, twenty twenty-one, they did have a to- toxic spill, a cyanide spill in Wharf, and they had to report that to the state. Um, so I think we need to really take a hard look at, at this ordinance and make it strong. Um, Coria, Cora, I can't, never pronounce Wharf's parent name, but they do have a mine up in Kings, uh, Alaska called the Kingsington Mine. And they have violated several EPA violations at that mine called the Kingsington Mine. So we really need to take a look, hard look at these worldwide mining companies coming in, and they're huge. They're big hitters coming in. When we
Fine.
look at exploration, we also look at that opening the door to larger hard rock mining operations. I thank you for your time.
Questions? Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, last one I have is Rita Chapman.
The vacation home lady. Now you're a mining lady. Hi, Rita.
Rita Chapman, Silver City. I am coming up as an independent individual. Um, and yes, I did work on the vacation home rental. So that was kind of my thought is, here we've worked less than a year. What, seven months on a, on such an important issue where we worked on two years for vacation home rental, and then we worked another year and we're still on it, I guess, again. So they, um, but, uh, I've so, less than one year work on an extremely complex issue. Um, this V H A Rs took two years and were less intrusive to our quality of life, quality of our air, quality of our water, and they are definitely less permanent. This is definitely a permanent issue. I did read through the comments. There's a lot of good ideas to be analyzed and possibly implemented. I'm glad you guys are thinking about taking the time to do that. Uh, I think there, definitely think there is more time. I'm in agreement with that, to develop this ordinance. I do think we need a guarantee or a fax that we will not be affected by the noise, the water quality, the dust or air quality, or a taking of our quiet enjoyment of our property. So that's just kind of a, I'm just reiterating what a lot of other people have said. And, um, I'd rather have a vacation home rental next to me than a mining operation. Just saying. So I'm just, um, just supporting the ordinance, supporting the direction you're going, supporting the fact that you're going to take the time and energy to listen to the comments and the input from both sides and make a really good, strong ordinance that can withstand the large amounts of money that might be poured against it. Any questions?
Questions?
Chairman.
Commissioner Higgin.
Thank you, Rita. Um, and you know, just from being on committees, it takes a while. Um, and I agree, um, this needs a, just a little bit more thought. I think the planning and, uh, the people that gave their input, uh, it wasn't just one side that gave their input for this ordinance. Um, it was both sides from the planning. I think they were fair and just. Again, our job is to look at it again and anything that, uh, we think the public or the mining companies, uh, both sides, to find. that we think the public or the mining companies, both sides, to find that solution where we can even make the, a even better one than, than has came forward, forward from the planning department and the planning commission. So again, it's not going to hurt us to take more public comment, to get our facts. And then again, Bruce had said that, you know, a lot of the public might not know about this, and we could get the word out a little bit better from both sides. So I'm not against that either. Like I said, I like people's comments. I like things that are based on facts and not just beating up people because this is, this is not an easy job for us. I love my job. I think our commissioners love our jobs, but it's not always the easiest job sometimes to just base it on emotion and not facts. So again, I hope we can continue this today and, and get more information from everybody. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rita. You're always nice.
So I think that overall, you know, I, I don't think that there's been a rush in trying to put something together that's adoptable right away. In addition to that, ordinances can be revised at a later date if there's something that is, has either been overlooked or something new that needs to be added to an ordinance. And so I personally, as one of five, I'm not in a hurry to adopt this at this point in time. I think that additional input would be great. I would encourage people to put their thoughts in writing. That would certainly assist in being able to do research, especially on state statutes and federal law for us as commissioners. And, you know, currently, we don't have an ordinance on this. And I, I did receive two messages of simply saying that the ordinance should simply say that there should be no hard rock mining or exploration. And I don't think that's doing any kind of justice to the, to the industry, which has been critical to the hills throughout the years. And so I think that it's going to be something fairly extensive. I think the draft, in my opinion, looks, well, I don't have anything in the, in the draft that I felt should be removed. We did put quite a bit of the onus on the planning commission to go through this, to hear testimony, and to bring forward the draft that they did. So I appreciate the work that they've gone through previous to this and the work that's been put into it by planning and zoning and our state's attorney's office.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I remember when this first came out, the comments that we were getting at the public was this is good, this is positive, and some forth. I don't have a heartache with continuing this either to give people in the audience another chance and us to actually be able to go over and review this. I'm looking at, I don't think we're in that big of a hurry. I think we could, at the July sixteenth meeting, put it at the end of our agenda for more discussion. But then I would suggest probably a, a full hearing, probably August sixteenth, when we have a full commission. But have it at the end of our agenda at the next meeting, if there's any more public comment and discussion, gives them guys time to get, get some more input. We get it, and then give us to August sixteenth to review those because a lot of those comments come in and we hear about that, but we need some good concentration time to.
I do, I received one late speaker request, one too.
Well, just so they know that we're gonna, we have a motion in a second that we want to continue to, so.
To the nineteenth, correct? Nineteenth?
Nineteenth, yeah.
So say those dates again, Lloyd.
It'd be continued to July nineteenth at the end of the agenda so that people would know to show up later. And then give us to August sixteenth, the second meeting in August, to review those comments, anything that's come forward. But it'd be on our August sixteenth.
For the final decision.
For the final.
Okay, I would, Gina Parkhurst, is that the correct name? Come ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, thanks for your time. I know you're at the end of this session, so I'll be brief. I am Gina Parkhurst. I live in Rapid City, and I did send an email comment. I think, I don't think I could find an email for you, Commissioner LaCroy. So if you didn't receive it, did you receive it?
I did.
You did? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I won't read it unless you want me to. But I do support the ordinance, and I do think there are some things that could make it stronger. And those are five things I outlined in my email. Or I can just give you the printout. Would you like me to read it or, or give you the printout?
I, I have a copy of that, I believe.
Oh, you have it?
I believe that I received that.
Oh, okay, great.
Ms. Gina, we're going to have more public comment again at July nineteenth, being, make the final decision on the sixteenth, but we'll keep your comments that you have now. If you have anything added to it, that would be good.
Okay, I'll be out of town on the nineteenth. So if I do have anything, I will email it to you. And I just want to say I participated in the early discussions that Deb led, and she did a great job. And I really appreciate, as a citizen, being able to participate in the early stages of this whole process. So, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Parkhurst? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my email's lloyd.lacroy@penco.org.
Lloyd.lacroy?
Yep.
At penco.org?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And here we thought you hidden that on purpose.
If that don't work, try Gmail.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to continue to July nineteen. Is there any further discussion? All those that favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, items from commission members. Start with Commissioner Laster.
After I reviewed my calendar, the biggest thing I had was the egg meeting out in Wall. We had an egg meeting out in Wall. Basically, there was a, an invite to a lot of individuals, producers, packers, to take comment and discussion about what we've heard in the news with the eight thousand head packing plant, the Kingsbury, plan out here in the industrial park, or at least that's the initial plan. There's no final plan on that, but, you know, there was, there's about thirty individuals there, forty individuals there that were, I mean, came in, got to ask questions. Most of the producers that I could tell from their statements are in favor of it. They're, they think it's, it'd be a wise decision to have a, a second bidder on the market, which raises cattle prices, which is what we need, since cattle prices are a little bit lower. And some of the other concerns was how is it going to impact the smaller packers, you know, like Wall Meats or Philip? And while there, there might still be some concern from the small packers, the small industries, many of them said, I don't even think it's going to impact us because our, our niche is to a small producer, or even a large producer who can only produce X amount of cattle. I mean, they're, one of the bigger cattle renters, West River, was there, and he said, I can, I produce, I want to say, he said, twenty-three thousand head of cattle. He says, I could, I could cover you for, if you ran max capacity, eight thousand, three days. So you're talking, the business plan is not for them to pull on these local resources and, or even to compete with the small processors. Their, their plan is to work with the big feedlot operations and help them expand their operations to meet their needs. And, and it's another competitor for, for the big four, which are all foreign owned, and this would be the first of its kind American-owned, American beef, a large processor. And the individual wants to bring it to Western South Dakota because that's where she's from. So, well attended, good questions. There's going to be another meeting. They have not sent me the date on it, but there will be one here in town. Pat Jones was there as well. He was, he was there asking questions for the city. But he also wants for the other meeting to be in town, so the locals here can actually comment on it. But there's not a set spot for it, just the preliminary location was the industrial park because it's, you know, the initial thought was that it's big enough, it's located near rails, located near the power that they need and things of that nature. So outside of that, that was about it for me of that. Do you want us to do our reports too, or?
Sure.
So healthcare trust board was canceled. It's, or it was moved into the July twentieth, so you won't hear me on that one. Community Health Center, Lloyd was at that one, I wasn't. And then Planning Commission, I think I already gave my input for Planning Commission. So my top three were easy. I'm done.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you. Mine was Black Hills Council of Governors, I think, and Gary was there. I think Jennifer presented on what pretty much our discussion was on that. So I'm just going to lay over that. I think, unless Gary has some stuff he wants to add. But community health was, was pretty, pretty much a basic meeting that we had, went over some of the financials and amended some more, more ordinances or policies that we have. We're in the process of doing that. Revenue was down a little bit for the last quarter. The other thing I'm, I'm going to touch on a little bit more on is, is the building committee meeting. And the reason why I want to touch on, I'm going to read off some stuff on that. I would, I think we recommended that building committees doing minutes now to all the commissioners. I'm correct? So I would have you guys pay attention to those minutes because the planning process, prioritization of space, the space needs assessment was what we went through this last meeting. And there was quite a bit of, quite a bit of information in there that I don't want you guys to be surprised on because you hadn't seen it. So maybe they can give you the report. But the committee is going to, has to take the time to go through what's the needs are and how soon we can do them. They're going anywhere from sixty-seven million dollars to a hundred and eight, to four different options. And there's a lot of moving parts. And so, and you know, we got the jail going on, and we're talking about, we put ten, and it's going to probably cost thirty, thirty-five million. So that's going to chunk, take a chunk out of that facility needs. So we may have to get creative. And there's just a lot of things moving forward. And I probably scared Mike when I said he needed to bring something forward in front of the commission because there's just so much information, there's no factual, all the stake, stakeholders need to put some input in before they come to the full commission.
Well, Lloyd, did you guys look into the bonding and, and things like that, too?
See, that's part of it is, is Mr. Drews, it has to, because we know we're going to have to do bonding, and so we wanted to get a start on it. So.
Did Cindy, by chance, Lloyd, tell you how much we could bond, or?
Well, she's still looking into it. But I think she, without, without increasing our costs, I'm not even going to say until, until she comes back.
Back in the day, I think it was up to forty.
Yeah, so.
Back when I was on the building committee before, but I'm sure it's changed.
So that's, that was part of the information we're waiting for, for our next meeting, is for her to come back with some information on that because then that determines which directions the, the building committee can do and if any other actions that we have can, can be done. But I, I just wanted to say, you know, in twenty forty, they've got, they're talking about, we're going to need seventeen courts. Court services is going to dump, court services sides are going to double. The pathway, one of the concerns, from taking inmates to the court systems is a concern, too. Pay, the public safety buildings can be increasing by fifty percent, you know. The jail, the house, as, as Kevin Tom said, you know, six, twenty, twenty-five is the highest that we're at. We're, we're expecting, we need, he said eight to nine to, I got down twelve hundred, nine to twelve hundred beds is what we're going to need by twenty forty. You know, these are some of the projections. The booking, booking area, right now, they, we need to double the size of our booking area as far as beds and, and seat, and also booking because, you know, there are people lined up on the outside, as you hear, waiting to get in, and we just, that's one of the, another top priority that we're looking at is the intake part of it. The government center, public se, public defenders, they're expecting fifty percent there, the state's attorneys, fifty percent, the treasurer, thirty percent. They're going to need the auditor, another thirty percent, HR, a hundred and fifty percent, in, in, in square footage. My, kind of getting, I'm taking those numbers off of, of our report. Buildings and grounds, you know, to me, three years ago, before they seen this, that's where I thought our next priority was going to be is buildings and grounds because, you know, they're working out of some very old buildings from here to there. You order supplies, you put some here, you put some there, you, you know, it's, it's not one, actually, the truck pulls up and you unload and take them to your room for storage. They got them scattered everywhere, which makes it inefficient for their equipment. So that's something to keep in mind, too.
Ask the question?
Sure.
Did they paint or do something or seal that building over here?
I think they did the roof. That's what I was, yeah.
What they painted with, do you know?
It's like a rubberized, you ever seen that? I'm sure it's that rubberized flex seal type stuff.
Figured it was something that was a sealant, but that blew, I was like.
I haven't seen them. I haven't been able to look at that, but they either put overlayment, a rubber membrane over it, or they use that rubberized sealant.
Must have color to it now or something.
But you guys got to remember, yeah, that's the, the old Harley building, they called that back there, and that's where the Harley shop was when we were kids.
That what was in that building before, eh?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah. Highway, JSC, and, and the extension office, that was probably the only good news that we heard during the meeting is that with, JSC, we had more room there, so we're good there. The highway department, the only thing that they were looking at is maybe for a new building to, to put their trucks and equipment inside so it's not sitting outside. That may, that's going to be a need. Extension building, they had no recommendations for that, but, but we've gotten some funding from the twenty, twenty vision funds to do some work on that. But, yeah, the range is ranging from sixty-six million to a hundred and thirteen. So really, you stop and figure, that's on top of fixing the jail that we have to get updated already. And that's why Kevin said, you know, with the, the jail study program that's going on right now, there could be some funding for that. There could be some possibilities at an off-site facility and joint ventures with the state and the county. You know, there, there's some options that have to be done, but we got to start looking at those things sooner than later because, you know, the federal and state, people that we do housing there, we get paid for, and that helps pay for the people that we're holding for courts and everything else right now. So some big stuff. So I just, I just didn't want you guys to be thinking that we're doing, you know, all of a sudden hear about this two months later and go, a hundred and thirteen million. Well, no, it's, all the conversations are going on. But the stakeholders and working with Cindy with the bonding and so forth that comes forward, we got to have all those facts before we bring anything.
I appreciate the update, Lloyd, and then it, it does put it in your head so you know the hundred and thirteen's coming somewhere.
That's the max.
Yes, sir.
That, what everybody kind of liked, Ron threw out there, he liked the sixty-six million dollar one. So, but you, we could take from each one, all of them or some of them, and it all depends on a lot of other different variables, too. It's a problem.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So you're already aware of this one prior, because of our budget meeting. But back on June twenty-third, Lloyd, Holly, and I met with the highway department and the state's attorney's office to talk about the, in preparation of looking for an adjustment to the wheel tax. And we discussed that at the, at the budget meetings. Also on that date, Ron, Holly, and I met with Mayor Allenders and Mayor Larson, along with the planning department. Mayor Allender, that time said they were looking at doing an annexation study. And we also discussed moving forward with the drainage study, which would impact areas of growth for both Rapid City and Barx Elder. Now, there were a lot of other things that were discussed during that meeting. Some of those, I, I mean, I have notes at home, too, that I didn't bring, but, so if Ron wants to add to that, he certainly can. And then also, on that same day, Lloyd and I also participated at the Black Hills Council Local Government meeting. Obviously, you're aware of that, because of our budget meeting, too, because of the financial support that the entities are going to have to come up with in order to properly fund that. And as Jennifer said, it appears that 52 cents per population will be required from each entity in order to properly do that, and that's going to be spread out over a period of time, so that it doesn't hit everybody so hard at the, at the same time. So, some critical things that are, that are taking place throughout, not only throughout Pennington County, but throughout this entire area. Growth brings on lots of challenges, and that's what we're looking at at this point in time. It's just what Boyd was talking about, too. I mean, most, a lot of that, that, that he's talking about is because of the growth that we're seeing and projecting, and so. In order to prepare for that, we have to make some tough decisions. Commissioner Ross, connect.
Going back to the city, county, one of the things that Mayor Allender mentioned was the, just the, finding employees, finding help, there's, I think he said they had 90 vacancies throughout the whole city. And so, I don't know, I think he looked at, he got some younger employees together, and he said, I want you guys to sit there and think about, tell me what you need, what you want, or what the younger generation wants to, what they're looking for, for better employee retention. And so, just some of the ones that he mentioned was a pet insurance policy, membership to a gym, a mental health day, so. He's looking at all the options, and we're, we're going through the same thing. It's not necess, he's, he said it's not necessarily the wage, it's, he said it's maybe working four-day work, four-day work weeks, so. That's one thing that the county and the city have in common. We're just, we have a hard time with employee retention, and just a hard time finding good, solid employees. Relative to the building committee, what it boiled down to, there's four options. And option three would be the 65 million, and that would include the purchase of the Great Western Bank property. I think we all agreed that the purchase of Great Western Bank property, if that becomes viable, that is the direction that we're going to go, relative to the cheapest option. And basically, the guy that presented this said, just buy all the land that you can get around here, if we want to keep everything on this campus. So, we got the lamplighter, if we get the Great Western property, then we could move on to the Jefferson School. So, after this meeting, I'm going to try to catch up with Kumar and find out if that's something that the county could eventually buy, because it's an older school, it's probably full of asbestos, the day, I went over and looked at it. The only occupants in that school right now would just be special ed. But Kumar would be able to tell me what their long-term plans are for that, but that would really fit nice into, if we could get the Great Western Bank property, get the Jefferson School, then we got the lamplighter, we would have a large enough piece of land that we could actually build something of, of significance. And I think, one way or another, when this is all said and done, 15 to 20 years from now, we're going to need another 500 to 600 parking spaces. So, we're looking at another parking rep. We have, you know, the, the different options that shows, you know, different locations, but that is going to be pretty critical as well, the, the parking. So, that's kind of the nuts and bolts.
Very good, thank you.
I don't, I didn't really like the 113 million option. And, and then, you know, we talked about the jail and the population of the jail. It's just not the increase in crime, but it's the length that folks have to stay in jail.
Yeah.
You know, and it's also the nature of the crime of, you know, there's like four different tiers, and there's a low offense, and then you get into the higher, and when you get into the higher, there, those particular, that particular group, they spend a lot more time in the jail. But what I found was intriguing is that, right now, like Kevin said, there's 60, we lost 60 rooms or cells that we were making money at $100 a day, and that's housing federal prisoners, and that's $6,000 a day, and that, if you take that times 365, that's a chunk of change, so. This study, that was one of the things they looked into, is that you, not only, you know, I mean, that's kind of a, it's not the holiday young, but it's still an income producer.
Covers our costs.
Commissioner Haskin.
On that note, I, I believe with the meth, it's just going to get, it's violent crimes. You're going to have more court costs, you're going to have more lawyer costs, you're going to have more jail time. I don't know what they can do about the epidemic, but it's been coming for a while, and it just, as you see from the jail totals today, it's just getting worse, and we deal with it in our business as well, so. But it just whacks people out so bad that even people that, you know, were just functioning, normal people, and then they just get hooked on, and then they, they're whole different people, and they just do these horrendous things, and I don't know if they did back in the 70s when drugs were apparent, or they had more violent drugs. But I, since I've been around and watching people, I've seen meth as probably the most violent drug I've ever seen, and people that just do stuff that, mental illness is what it looks like when you have them, you know, in your businesses and stuff, and it's just sad. Especially, like I said, you went to high school, or went to new people, and they're just whole different people, so. So, I think that, like I said, in the coming years, if we don't, if something doesn't come about with meth, it's just going to, our court costs and everything is just going to get huge in our jail times, so, and our, and our prisons are going to fill up with more violent offenders, so. On a good note, when we went out for the tour, Joe had many calls from the ranchers and the people out there that we had visited, they fixed a lot of their stuff, and they're having blade training, and they're doing some other stuff, and he listened, so. They appreciate that. Number one, he listened, and number two, he followed through on one sense or another, if he could do what they were saying. Today, here's a date, so, was good, so you guys go out there, and they're doing Creighton Road today, because of the, they got some moisture. So, that is Travis's district, Travis, you've been taking care of your district. Well, they have said that as, as ranchers and stuff out there, that you have answered them, and they're very impressed with that, so. Appreciate that, too. Before, we had people, and you went out there, and you already know, as commissioners, you gotta, you gotta give them a phone call back, and you got to follow through, and you got to have your, your departments follow through. And in that note, Shannon as well, Shannon had some calls from equalization, told Travis about it. Travis knew about that, and he followed through, and we talked about it today, so. It was huge. Travis has done a good job in that district, taking care of his people, so. All of our commissioners, I think, are on board with applying to their constituents, and that's been good. You hear when people don't. Not every time do we catch them all the time, but most of the time, this commission has been good about taking care of their, their clients and their, their constituents, so I appreciate that. Always hear good, good things about people that, on this commission about that, so. I'm going to be honest, as chair and vice chair and different things that I've ran, that's not always been the case. So, when you don't, and your people that follow through in your districts, then you're taking the, it's not a burden, but the work of another commissioner that doesn't want to follow through on some of their stuff or answer their people, so. This commission has been very good about that. Any other things? Was a wonderful 4th of July, hopefully everybody had a nice 4th of July. Anything else? I don't, I didn't have any committee reports. Again, thank you, Fire Service Board, been having lots of calls on people from Silver City, Wal, Quinn, thanking you guys again, our commission again, as you saw today, well-needed stuff in their areas for fire departments, they're getting equipment, they're getting a lot of people in their areas helping with this. It's bringing awareness, I think, as well, in their districts, you guys, from this commission, putting forth money to do those fire departments, and those fire department volunteers, giving the word out as well, that they'll be more efficient, as you see. So, that was this commission that did that for them, and been hearing a lot about very positive things on that. So, thank you again for what you've done for our Fire Service Board members, commissioners. The last couple of years, we've made a huge difference, and it took five of us to do that, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haskin.
I think one thing that we can all agree on, going forward, when you sit there and look at the cost of infrastructure, the problems they've got with the jail, we're not going to be able to do this just with real estate taxes. We're going to have to implement a sales tax of some sort, where we can try to capture, you know, when we get millions of tourists here and they're using county roads, they got to get some skin in the game as well. And I know this has been in front of the state a few times, it keeps getting shot down, but hopefully, this jail study that they're doing, something will come out of that, so, where we can get some relief, because this thing's killing us. Housing prisoners and, and a jail that's starting to, you know, needs $30 million worth of repairs, that sales taxes won't do that forever.
I got one more thing, too.
Commissioner La Croix.
I mean, excuse me, property tax. Sales tax will.
I, I just wanted to add, if this commission wants to, you know, remember, I was on that collective healing group for over two and a half years, and we gave a recommendation to the police department on some of the things that they need to do before they kind of dissolve. But they started, in one of Kevin's reports, he, he showed where admits to the care campus from Journey On, this is a new program that they started, that was something we suggested, but then the, the police department implemented afterwards. So, I never knew really much about it until later on this week, because, or last week, I should say, because I was working on a property on Maple Street, so I got to see all the traffic of the police departments coming in, and all the walking and talking and everything else, but the tenants that are going to take over my, my property are the, the two heading up the program of Journey On. They wanted to be in that neighborhood, close to responding to everything, so I had a good conversation about what they're all doing, and if you, if you guys would like a present, a short presentation sometime, we could probably set it up, and they'd give a 10-minute review or something.
You're right, they're a good group. Lance just came to visit me at my motel, but they come to the motel and they work. They, they have done some, and you can see them across the street, working and taking care of people. They, they do a wonderful job, and they have saved thousands of dollars with the police department, just on rides and different things that they do. At first, I'm like, okay, now we're having another group, they think they can do better, and I said that to Lance, so you guys think you can do better, blah, blah, blah. And then watched them at work, and they just, a lot of them just learned and listened and went to different groups in Rapid City to find out the answers of, you know, what's going to make that Journeys On successful, so. It is a good group. It does some wonderful stuff for Rapid City.
It's something new and exciting, and I got to listen to her passionate, but I gave, she didn't really know who I was, or heard some were people were, but when, once I explained to her that I'd worked at Detox for 10 years, and I understand some of the, how, what the work that they're doing, how difficult it is, then we got into a long conversation, and, but they're, they got the good, I mean, they, they've got the heart and the passion of what they're doing to make the difference, and I, and they're really getting to know the clients down there, and that's...
Well, they, they'll tell you how eye-opening, what they thought they knew, and that's most people, including myself, what they thought they knew about homeless, how people take care of them, how the police treat them, that kind of thing. I think people didn't know, it looked like if you were, you were waking up somebody that was, you know, passed out or drunk, you don't sit there and bend over, you, you know, touch them with your feet, you don't kick them. And it looks like, if you didn't know before, I'd be like, are they kicking them? And they're not kicking them, they're just moving them with their feet to wake them up, because if they wake up and you're by their face and stuff, so. A lot of that stuff I had talked to some of the Journeys On and other people, it's, I didn't know all that either, until they were telling me stuff, and the police, you know, once they were coming and visiting with me as well, so. It's a long process of that, the groups that are out there, and like, you're right. They get used to the certain people, and then, and then once you know the certain people, you know, too, basically, what, what you have to do next, so.
I've, I've always said, when I worked at Detox, I've told people, I've admitted doctors, I've admitted lawyers, and I've seen many, many very well-educated people who are living on this street.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haskin.
I might point out, option three, one for 65 million, he allocated 7.5 million for the purchase of the Great Western Bank property, and that would include remodeling after the acquisition, so. Thought I'd throw that number out.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, made the motion.
All those that favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.